20th, did I forget to turn those on? Do I need to do it again? Yep, I do. It's 7 o'clock, August the 20th, and we'll call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda, as agenda changes, I'd like to move the pool temperature to the start of unfinished business if there are no objections. So we'll move pool temperature to the start. Where is that? There it is. We'll do that first, as there are some folks here about the pool temperature with little ones, so in deference to them, we'll move that up. Any other agenda changes from the board?
The only other thing is, if we're going to do that also, we move the temperature monitoring software console.
Do that. Do that at the same time? Understood. So, pool temperature, then temperature monitoring software? Any other changes to the agenda? Alright, no agenda changes. Public comments. Before we start on public comments, just a reminder to everybody out here, we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We're not strict about that. However, we ask to kind of keep as close to that as you can, because we have business that we do have to get to tonight, and not everybody wants to be here till midnight. So, we ask you all to try to limit that as much as possible. Remember, don't direct your questions or comments to any one particular, one person in particular. You're addressing the entire board, alright? And just the board. Even though the director sits up here, you're not addressing the director, you're addressing us. So, with that being said, Ms. Cynthia Allen? Yes, ma'am. You don't have to stand up. You can sit down, whatever's comfortable.
Well, we came on the behalf of her to talk about the pool temperature. I know this has been a constant battle. We turn our swim team into public. This is a public pool. We bring our families, we bring our children to this pool. In order for us to take swim lessons, my very not large, very skinny child, we have to wear extra wetsuits. Layer him up, it was too cold. A half hour swimming lesson for my child to swim, he turns blue and is shivering. 10 minutes under the lesson. He's six years old. My four year old, even with the wet suit, refuses to take swim lessons. So when I take him out crabbing, I fear that he doesn't know how to swim, because it's too cold for him to learn. He won't get in the pool, it's too cold. Sometimes it'll get a little kiddy cold. Most of the time it's warm enough, but with a wet suit. I know a lot of my friends don't take their little kids to pools. They won't take their babies. If kids are not learning to swim, they're not able to come to lessons. On weekends, when it's a rainy day and we want to just take our kids somewhere recreational, because we're very active people, if it's too cold to go to the park, we come to the pool weekly. So, it needs to go up. 82 degrees is not warm enough for little kids. This is a public pool. This is not a competition swim team pool, even though we share that. We need to share the temperature. We need to be above 84 degrees. So, that's what I, my hope would be.
Okay.
I'd like to, that's it. And I just.
No, thank you very much. No, that's great. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
There you go. Do I have anything? Nope.
Well, thank you for coming. Ms. Graham?
Is your name, young man?
Owen.
That's a cool name. You have a great night, okay?
Ms. Graham?
Um, I've been many times. The pool to me seems to be getting colder and colder. I don't know what's gone wrong with it in the last couple of weeks. It's almost unbearable. And it's pathetically sad. A woman came this morning, knocked on the door, knocked the door open 45 times. And she said, "I hope it's warm enough for me to stay. I desperately need to be in here today." She didn't even last 10 minutes. I don't know what's gone wrong. I don't know what's happening. Baby pool seems cold whenever. It's just horrible. I don't know what we're going to do. What is the status? What is happening? If it were even to, that would be heaven. I read it today, the temperature being 79. Cold as bloody hell. The getting out of the pool, twice last week, my hands were completely cold. I couldn't, I mean, just, I'm afraid, you know, it was just shivering. If I'm getting out, I'd be about 90 degrees. So, what's the status? What's happening?
Well, what's the status on which part? We were going to talk about it tonight. We as a board, the pool temperature is supposed to be set currently at 82. I can't tell you what it was this last week. You're shaking your head, no. I can either confirm or deny that tonight, or prove or disprove. And I'm not doubting. I am not doubting what anybody says, by any means, by any means. I don't know what the temperature's been this last week, so I couldn't give you an answer. Do we, did we have a boiler failure or anything this last week? Did the temperature drop?
We had one, though. A couple of days, the temperature did drop. Matt did address it.
How loaded? 81. We did order the software. We did order the software to talk to the boiler so that our maintenance person no longer has to manage it by hand. That hasn't been installed yet. So it's been ordered. So we should have a constant temperature once that's here and in place.
Wouldn't it be possible to put a pool cover on and match? I was looking around thinking, you know, it's pretty bulky, but maybe a pool cover could be posted up on the pulley and, you know, somehow stuck up from the top. You know, just a big, big plastic.
It's something we can definitely look at.
We can look into.
It could help terrifically.
Okay.
It would save money, because.
We will, we will look into it. It's a good suggestion.
It is a good suggestion.
Lynn, there's one up front. You sure? Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Graham. Is there anything else? I'm so sorry. Alright, thank you. Matthew, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I had a few issues that I wanted to bring up. Now, because one of them, I said, because I come here mainly for the open swim, and it seems like the people who come from the open swim are the ones that are getting screwed and getting the least amount of time, where all the other programs are getting all the, all the attention. Like, why is it so late? And the other issue that I had was, because, you know, with like the high school swim team. Because when you get into the fall and then they have all those high school swim meets, then I end up losing a couple of days of pool time. Because I already lose two days as it is, because I don't have the Tuesday and Thursday nights. And then when you get the swim team involved, I end up losing three nights of, uh, pool time. Is it, is this supposed? Because if I understand, this is a public pool. Is this supposed to revolve around the general public or around the swim teams? I know it's a balancing act having two swim teams.
Well, I meant to answer that would be, we evolve around all of the public, and we have, and other commissioners can chime in. But we have many programs, from the aerobics programs in the mornings, lap swim, to our swim school, to our open swim. But, and it's very hard to do. You're right, but it's something we can look at. And I think it's even on the agenda, sir.
Well, the other question I was asked is, because when Oak Harbor High School does their swim meets here, it's always 6 o'clock in the evening. What is up with that?
Uh, that's the time we've scheduled them for in the past.
What I also wish they would do on the fall schedules, put a list on the papers of when all the scheduled meets are. I think that would be nice if they do something like that.
So beforehand, do, do something with the meets, so that people know beforehand?
Yeah.
And look at times?
Yeah.
Okay.
When they pick up paper, like a schedule paper, maybe put some of the listings of the schedule changes on a piece of paper.
Matthew did bring up one interesting point of interest, Sean. And that is that the high school swim meets, everywhere, in the four years that we swam, and Erica could attest to this, that they, every pool we go to or have gone to has it at an earlier time. The disadvantage is kids have to leave school. You know, and that, and I never really quite understood that. You know, that's the flip side of that. That kids, for probably six times in a, in a two month period, have to leave school half a day. And it's like, really? But that's when they have their swim meets, it'll be at 4 o'clock. Usually at 4 o'clock.
Yeah, usually anywhere between 3 and 4.
Whereas we have hours at 6 o'clock. And I, and I just brought that up.
You don't know the answer? It's because that's when Enwak is in the pool.
Well, I don't want to be negative. I'm trying to look at this thing positively and, and.
And I'll say this. We are looking at the fall schedule tonight.
Yes.
And it's things we can keep in mind as we look at the fall schedule. Matt, we are, I'm scared.
Because I, you know, you mentioned about the Enwak. That's back to the point where it's revolving too much around the swim teams. It's like, excuse me, if this is a publicly run place, not everything should be revolving around the swim teams.
Excuse me, Sean?
Yes.
We already voted on the fall schedule.
Yeah, it's been approved.
It's been approved. I'm just looking at the, at the agenda. So I was wondering why it was on there again?
There was one little, there's one little tweak that we needed to make.
But the fall schedule is approved.
And we've been telling people what it is.
Changes that you're making tonight?
If we want, if we want to approve the changes. Alright.
We've been putting some of them out.
So, noted, Mr. Smith. Thank you very much for coming. Was there anything more, sir?
I think that basically summed up everything. And hopefully I, I got everything out of my system.
Well, thank you very much.
Diana?
Diana, Mrs. Diana, and I'm sorry, I can't.
Diane?
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting. Okay. One, the pool temperature has gone too cold. If the water doesn't work. One of the fishermen's wives brought in at the moment, resists off by one and a half days.
Okay.
So it remains one. It's really 79 and a half, which is.
Cold. Actually, it's even colder. It's, it's even colder for that, so that's.
Okay. The United States Water Fitness Association has recommended temperatures, and I really think we ought to establish them.
Okay.
And for preschoolers, 3 to 5 year olds, you're talking 86 to 90 degrees. That's a little warm for the older people. But we need to at least get up to 84, which is public school, or public pool recommended temperatures. And that covers all age groups. That's a recommended.
What's the range for that, ma'am?
The range for that is 83 to 86.
Okay.
Or it appears at 85 to 86. I'm glad that's what you have. But anyway, it needs to be brought up.
Okay.
It needs to be brought up to the 84 or 86 range. Because what we have now means nobody can professional stormers or amateurs, you know, can really do that. But there are other things I'd like to.
Yes, ma'am.
One, I'd like to establish recommended temperatures for public pools.
Okay.
And to use pools. Has anyone ever talked about the presence of the pool group?
Uh huh.
Okay, what's, what's going on with that? Is there one?
We aren't allowed to establish that as a board.
Okay. What about, I hear that we are subsidizing high school swim teams?
No.
And we're not at all?
No, ma'am.
We're not giving free access to the pool?
No.
We're being reimbursed by school?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And volunteers? How come you don't have volunteers working at the front desk, cleaning up and things like that? How come volunteers aren't utilized?
Utilized in which way?
Anywhere out the front desk.
We actually are using quite a few volunteers. We have an entire squadron that has taken over our dog park as a volunteer. We do have some volunteers that do come in and set up for special events.
Here at the pool? Why don't we have regular volunteers? That would cut the costs of, um, because it'd be very easy for the supervisor who runs the pool to set up a volunteer special. Just, you know, collect the money, answer the phone calls.
Something we could look at? And with the, with the labor laws, we'd have to look at carefully. But yes, we could definitely look at.
And you do have a lot of programs here. There's grant funding for all that. You need to look at somebody writing up for grants. Consult with me if you need to.
Okay.
And I heard a rumor today, and I'm not going to say where it came from, I heard this place does not have liability insurance.
That's not true. That's not true.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to.
No, ma'am, that's not true.
Okay.
If I may add, if I looked at the paper, yesterday's paper, it mentions about the insurance. So we just voted on that Monday. But the new company starts, or the new insurance firm starts the 1st of September. But yeah, that was voted on Monday.
Oh, it's homeowner and the city above cover that concern you?
Yeah, no, you don't, yeah.
Nope, it's covered.
Okay, I'm good.
I apologize. I had one more thought that I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead.
And it's about use of the hot tub and the sauna and stuff, because at certain times, like during lap swim, it's open and stuff. But I've, I've, I've been told sometimes that I could not go in, because, because I thought my membership was for like, I guess it's mainly for open swim. And I think there's some inconsistencies. And I think the way I'm being treated, that I'm basically being told that, like, I can't even, well, other people, like, I even see other people in the hot tub, and I'm being told I cannot go in until 7:30. I'm thinking there's some real inconsistencies there. And something's got to change.
Do you remember when that was, sir? Because we can ask, we can ask our director to look into that?
I wish I could remember exact dates, but I know that there's been some inconsistency there.
Can you get his information? Mr. Smith, before you leave, can you give your information to Ms. Erica here? And she'll get back to you on that? Alright? And we'll look into that for you? Would that be alright?
I would, I'm going to be going into the pool shortly.
After you're done, sir.
Just leave it at the front desk, and I can pick it up.
Alright.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
Several times, I've been turned away from the pool in the morning because of the conflict on the schedule. I can't come in for aerobics at this time. Can't come in for this or that at the other time. I, one day, I said, I finally said, "Look, take some money from my debit card. I'll put $40 in my account and take whatever amount you need to fit me in for whatever. If it's $2.50 on a military discount, do that. If it's $4 for aerobics, do that. I don't care. But don't keep saying to people." And on particular two mornings, three people and I were sent away because we said, "No, I'm not going to, I'm not doing aerobics." And the whole pool had, you know, four people in it. I usually don't do aerobics. I've gone in deep and done my thing. So I wasn't having to come in because I said I wasn't doing the aerobics. So that seems a little bit silly. But then next time I said, "Okay, I'm doing aerobics. Take care of me and try to do one."
Okay. So inconsistencies with our programs and lane swims?
Got it.
Or times for our programs and.
But there's always lap swim when aerobics is going on. Oh, I take that back. You're right. During the summer, it's that, those swim lessons. I forgot.
It's a little bit weird there.
Yeah.
So, there should be a way for the young women that, oh, it's not, I thought it wasn't a problem. You know, that I should be able to come in and take a little space in there.
And it is very hard to accommodate everybody, but we will do our best.
Absolutely. I know that.
So, thank you. Mr. Hofmeyer?
My name's Shane Hofmeyer. I've been at work since the second I got out of bed. And the second I walked to that door. It's like, I'm not here for my health. I'm sure as heck not here to listen to the best career ring show in town. You might be arguing with the boss. But as I sit here at the last regular meeting, the action I see from a few board members, that whether intentional or not, it seemed to elevate on destroying the statistic. And I'm very upset by that. So that, that's why I'm here tonight. To try to make sure this place stays here and that all these people can keep swimming. Kids can learn how to swim, et cetera. You know, I, I know it's subsidized by the taxpayers. But from a revenue point of view, it needs to be looked at more as a private sector business. You know, business basics one on one. If I'm in the business of selling t-shirts, how many plain white t-shirts can I sell for $99? Not very damn many. But if I, if I put, you know, I adore growler noise on that plain white t-shirt, I can probably sell a lot of them for $99. This pool is a plain white t-shirt. There's no water slide, there's no ball. There's six lanes to swim in. When people think that the price to swim at could be increased so substantially, it is totally backwards. A pool should be added, or a slide should be added to the pool. The pool should be comfortable to get in. Instead of being $3 to get in, maybe it should be to a thing. But like I said, the actions that I've seen were, were very disheartening really, because the information that I heard being broadcast, it seemed to come across as much more than mistaken. It seemed to come across as entirely concocted and entirely infactual. And I don't want to throw the word liar around, but numbers are numbers. And when you call a pool in Anacortes and ask what it costs to swim in, they tell you the same price every time you call. And when several board members sit here and say that it's well more up there than it is, I don't get it. The other thing you have to look at, maybe Anacortes does charge 10% more than we charge here. But do they offer more? And as a, as a candidate to be elected to this board, as far as the pool temperature goes, when I'm sitting up there, I'll make the motion to the whole, the whole meeting in the pool. And if it's too cold to sit there for that whole time, then I guess it's too cold. You think you're voting out, but I'll still make the motion. That's all I have tonight. And I hope that, I think all of you started out on the board for the right reason. And I hope that none of you will let your legacy be destroying this pool. And Oak Harbor no longer having a pool. I think, I, I think we can work together and make this place work. So thank you for your time. And we'll work with you guys if it goes that way. Thanks.
Ms. Kathleen Sulek? Is it Sulek, or how do you say?
Mrs. Kathleen Sulek.
Mrs. Kathleen Sulek. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm relatively new to the pool. Been coming three weeks. Have noticed the temperature fluctuations. First time we first, I came this past Tuesday, it was great. I thought, oh, boy, everything is fixed. And today, not so great. It was cold again. Regarding the temperature, I'm just wondering if it's a manual situation, is that so tough to do? Do we need all the, it is tough.
Very.
And you can explain why?
Sure. There's a lot of gallons out there. And unlike a pot on the stove, it takes a while for the pot on the stove to warm up. You multiply that by a boiler in the back that moves water through. And this is something I wanted to say anyway. Our water circulates through our bay, our kids' pool to our main pool. They're, they're connected. So, the temperature in one affects the other. And so, if you get in the stairs over here, it might feel warmer. If you get it out a little further, it's gonna be colder. But it's still difficult to manually keep the temperature on all of that many gallons of water the same. It's a problem we've had for months. There's no excuse, it's a problem we've had for months. And we've put in, I'm sorry, go ahead ma'am.
I was just gonna say, how will the software compensate for that?
The software will tell without somebody having to manually make those adjustments and wait for those adjustments to be noted. The computer will register those and move the boiler to keep a more constant temperature in the pool water. So, it may not be the best technical answer, but that's the one I got.
Yeah, okay. All right. And then, as far as pool use, everybody seems to be addressing that. I come during a lap swim. And I'm not an Olympic lap swimmer, I'm more of a dog paddler, keep moving back and forth. And I noticed though, one day I came and I was kind of trying to choose a lane to get into because I don't want to get into any Olympic swimmer's way, I want to be out of their way. But there was a, what appeared to be, a swim instructor at that end of the pool. And there were kids in two areas of the pool down there. Not moving, not going, just there, listening to the, to what was being said. And I was thinking, okay, so I don't want to get in their way because I was assuming they were going to be starting to come up and down the lane. They didn't, I went a different lane. Along with that, there are people who stand in the lanes here, a lot of times talking to the lifeguards. And they're standing there, two people, so again, if we venture from getting into the lane, but they're just standing there. If they're standing there, they should be out of the pool. So, the people who want to actually use the lanes can use it. So, I think that's a problem.
You addressed that, please.
Yep. I'm not sure where we're supposed to go. I almost get a feeling like maybe seniors aren't wanted at the pool.
Not at all.
With the issue of cold temperatures, with the issues of the lap swimming. And also, I didn't want to come just totally prepared tonight, not knowing what the board did or anything. So, I started to listen, in fact, I did listen to your whole June meeting on YouTube. I thought I was gonna get to June and July, but maybe you guys stay so long. And I do want to thank the commissioners for being really aware of the taxpayer money. Really seem to be trying to hold the line on that. But I'm just wondering, I also heard on that tape that YouTube takes, that these silver sneakers deal, the training was here and that they helped have it going within a month or six weeks, it's still not going. So, putting all those issues together, you have to wonder where do seniors fit into the picture. I've also heard a lot of talk about kids and swim teams and things, but not a lot of talk about seniors coming and using the pool. So, it makes me wonder just where the hierarchy is for seniors at the pool.
We look, I, I think the board as a whole, I can't speak fluent, actually I can't. The board as a whole places each program important. I equal, try to be equal important to each program, whether it's aerobics. And I don't think there's an age limit on any program, whether it's our little ones or those of us that may be older or more seasoned. So, seasoned. And so, everybody's equally important in, in the eyes of the district. And it's, it's a, as you can hear from tonight, it's a tough juggling act. It really is. And when you try to get all the programs we have in here, it's very difficult to do. But I, I don't think anybody's looked at more or less than anybody else.
And then, I'm just curious too, how many lifeguards are required to be at the pool, like on a day like today, during lap swim time from 10:30 to 1:15? How many lifeguards need to be on deck?
We need a minimum of two on deck.
Okay, so how come there's four or more lifeguards? And I'm assuming they're all paid, so why are there so many?
Because we're getting ready for our open swim to start. And so, we do put more lifeguards on the deck when we have open swim, just due to the amount of people that normally show up for open swims. If we find as we're going along that our open swim is quiet, the supervisor will send a lifeguard home. So, that we, we do take a person off of the payroll for low patronage. But we do, because of the diving board being open, we don't want to put our, anybody at risk of a head, neck, or back injury with lifeguards that wouldn't be able to respond appropriately and with enough staff to care for that in the best and most appropriate manner.
It just seems like over, it seemed like there were four on deck the whole time I was here, so it seems like overkill for the amount of people.
Yeah, there's, there are a couple that are leaving. Their shift is ending, and so they're doing a turnover with the ones that are coming on, so there will be some up. But in the evenings, we do have three to four on, just because we do have our open swim numbers that do come up higher. We, we want to have that many there, just to keep everybody safe.
Well, I have a million more things, but I'm sure my time is though. I'll just say, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, yes ma'am.
The people who had questions about the pool temperature, are you going to stick around until we discuss this, vote the lane?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to encourage you to do that, please.
All right, I have no more, what did you say? You came in late. Yes ma'am.
I'm not sure if you got that one. Shane said, I think that in the insurance meeting the other day, the insurance agent saying that the district appears to be unstable and in state flux, and looking at the high turnover of the board and the director, that continued to that is that honestly, we have a line that we want. We can go back to 2011, when the levy passed, this district is fiscally strong, its programs are strong, its maintenance was strong, and we have driven ourselves off the cliff here over the last four years. And that responsibility lies with the board. And I realize when I point up there, we've seen four team bodies go through there, and so that's, that's what, it isn't necessarily all in one. But it also means those who are new to the board need to realize that when you talk to other board members or even the staff to understand what's going on, you're talking to the line that you're on. You have to go back to help do that for them. And the truth of the matter is, when we raised, when we raised fees across the board two years ago, revenue has gone down. Raising fees does not guarantee an increase in revenue. And it didn't last time, it won't this time. We have way too much dissatisfaction to tell people it's going to cost them more to do something they're already dissatisfied with. It's not gonna work. And the fact of the matter is, what's happened is, the district has shrunk its own footprint through mismanagement. And if you're going to come out of the hole, it isn't gonna come by killing any piece of your revenue stream. It's gonna come by reducing your expenses, tightening up, making sure that your maintenance people you're paying for are actually maintaining your pool, making sure this is their primary objective, making sure that you combine staffing responsibilities to minimize those costs, which also skyrocketed since 2011. And realizing that this really is a rocket science. It's complex, but it has been done exceptionally well before. And it's been done exceptionally poorly yet. And you have to stop, pull up the mirror and say why. And maybe all those people we've chosen not to listen to, who had wisdom from before, all those commissioners, all those others who were here and ran such a sound program, have something that would actually help get that under threat. And one of the things that aligns with that is this whole issue of the swim team, was the constant meeting of the swim team. And nobody stopped to say, the moment the swim team started to collapse, was when the director said the swim team should pay $150,000 more a year. And he didn't say that because he thought the swim team couldn't do it. He said that because he knew the swim team was strong. It was the leading, a revenue producer for the district, the leading producer of patronage. And the board said, we're not playing, we're not doing that. All of a sudden, everything started to collapse because other actions were taken. And when you talk about coming after the swim team, you're really talking about coming after revenue stream again. There's no question we've gone now to where there's some disparity there, but that's what you create, it wasn't what was there before. And one of the things you are obligated to the taxpayers to do is to account for the $92,000 deficit in 2013. You were told twice by the director that it was there, it was on the budget versus actual, and you never told the taxpayers how that was paid. That, by law, that's supposed to be reconciled. Same way, by law, we shouldn't be getting 60 days worth of minutes today. Those are supposed to be done promptly. That means that the taxpayers know what's going on and they can respond. Those are your obligations to the district, it's your obligation to go back and do that, and it's your obligation for us to have a binding resolution that governs the swim team and reading of our athletic program, that would prohibit, the very concern that was voiced last time, and that is that the taxpayers would end up being stuck in loopholes. Never in the history of this district has that been a possibility until this board and the director decided to violate that resolution, create another paradigm, and never changed the resolution. It is, if you don't like the resolution, that's fine. But I don't know why you haven't changed it. That's your duty, and it's time to step up and do your duty. And stop coming after the district, and start coming after yourselves. And do what needs to be done to restore the health of this district.
All right. Anybody else? Shane. 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 All right. Any further comments?
I'm just curious, does the swim team pay for itself, or is it subsidized by YouTube?
It's...
Heavily subsidized.
I wouldn't say it's heavily subsidized. I mean, they do pay, but I'd have to, you know, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me to tell you how much they, they pay with all the kids we've got and how much the district pays into it.
And what does the district, or what...
Wait a minute, I do have. See, I lied to you.
What do the people here of the city get out of the swim team? Is it something...
You know what? Here's what, here's what I'll do.
I would love to say one thing, I asked you at the beginning of the meeting, if we subsidize the swim teams?
You said, you said the high school ones.
High school.
There's more than that?
Here's what we're gonna do. We're not gonna get into this discussion because we're taking a hard, hard right turn, all right? I'll be more than happy to talk to you, or you can ask the, I, what I'll do, I ask you to do is talk to the director, interim director, to give you those numbers specifically. We just passed the budget that is available, that shows exactly where the costs are, all right? That was for 2015, and we're gonna, pardon me, we're gonna do it again for 2016 here soon, pardon me, I'm sorry. So, you'll actually be able to see how much it costs and where the revenue comes from and everything else, all right? So, if you get with Erica, she'll be able to give you those numbers.
Okay, aside from the numbers, what does the town or the community get from the swim team? What does it benefit?
Why, it's a year-long program for youth. That, um...
Eleven months.
Good citizens.
It's, it's eleven months because they, we've used to close the pool in August. So, it's an eleven, it's eleven...
Sorry.
Mr. Chair.
I got it, thank you. So, it's, it is an eleven-month program. And the reason is because traditionally, we've closed the pool for a month for, or two to three weeks in August, all right? The kids still swim, all right? But it's, it's the only year-round program for youth in, in our district. It provides a healthy habit, it provides them with some drive and positive reinforcement of values for the youth. So, there's a lot of good things for it. If you look at what we've done in the past with kids graduating, some of our past swim team and what they've gone on to do, the positives far outweigh the negatives for the youth in our community and what they do in a community such as ours. So, there, there are some big tangibles there for the youth in this community. Stop, stop. No, no, you may not, no, you may not. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. We're done having comments, don't out. I can give you a more definitive, I'm not gonna say it again. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. There are many things in there, there are people that can speak a lot better about that than I can, the coach probably is one of them. But there, there's a lot of positives from all of our programs, the, the swim team included. In the past, it's been over 100 kids, we're down to about 55 or 54 right now. So, we have shrunk, as people have said. But it's pretty stable for the last past four to five months, which is kind of nice. So, there are some positives there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I please have one minute?
Certainly.
I will say this, EnWAC changes lives, and I believe that. As a dad of a child with special needs, I watched what it did to her life, it opened up a new world to her. So, a lot of the talk you're gonna hear is, what does it, what does it provide to the kids of this district? Changes lives. It provides an atmosphere where kids can, can learn healthy habits, discipline. It's the most include, this is the most inclusive place, I believe, on this whole entire island. When you look around, and I, and I watched how my kid was treated, whether we're gonna talk about youth soccer, youth little, softball, any of those programs, she really would not have been included like she was in EnWAC here. Now, we, we had our run-in with the past coach, but I'll tell you what, I've had two years to consider that. And those two years, I've realized one thing, he truly did inspire my kid to, to push on, pass where she, she, we, we ever thought she would be. And so, what does EnWAC mean to this community? I think this community, without EnWAC, will be sad, it will be sad. Because there are kids that, that it's changed their lives. I'll tell you what, the group of kids that were here since we've been here, two, one of them went to the Naval Academy, one's went to the Coast Guard Academy, one went to the Merchant Marine Academy, several of them went to major, major universities. They're going to be successful in life in large part because of the discipline, the nirvana is still in them. And that was to, to try your best, to push on, to not give up. School comes first. I'm a big believer of EnWAC. And even more as time has went by, because I've seen the void in my daughter's life now that she's not part of it, a huge void. And I would just encourage you to look past some of the things you hear and just to imagine if you were a kid, and you were a kid that wanted to swim. What an amazing, an amazing place, what an amazing team. Think about that. And, and maybe some of the naysayers, maybe they should remember when they were a kid. You know what, it's a great place for a kid to be. And you know, when you've seen them here, day after day after day, instead of hanging out on the skateboard park, nothing wrong with the skateboard kids, don't mean that. But I'll tell you what, much better that they be, I think, mentored by adults than left to their own. And, and I think it's sad if we as a community can't see our kids, is that, they're our greatest treasure. We invested our kids because that, people, that is what changes the world. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think you're also going to see the, Mr. Hoffmeyer talked about it earlier, Shane, you're gonna see the board change here in about five months. And all of our programs, you heard other people talk about it, how we've fiscally mismanaged things, so, whatever. The pool's here, we're doing good. It's, it's hard to run a pool with 30-year-old equipment that there was no capital improvement plan on, but what, what the heck do I know? Anyway, the point is that the, that we, we do need to make some changes. And all of our programs are going to be affected by that in the future. And I think you're gonna see a board that's going to look at all programs and ask all programs to make changes, as the board changes and the district changes. So, that being said, we're gonna finish public comments, we're gonna go on to board issues. I have no board issues, does the board have any issues?
I have two.
Yes ma'am.
I don't usually like to respond to public comments, but tonight I've been called a criminal, and I've almost been called a liar, although the person that made that comment said he didn't want to call us liars. One, the minutes are available on YouTube and, okay, forget my comments because the two people that called me names are not even listening. Next.
All right. Any other board issues? Approval of minutes?
I'd like to make a motion, please, that we approve the minutes for May 21st, 2015, the regular meeting.
I have a motion to approve May 21st in a second. Any discussion?
I think I actually have a change that needs to be made to those minutes. Only because...
You got it?
Yes. That was the time, I could not find the minutes on YouTube without the tortuous path, so I would like to just change that thing that talks about where you find the minutes. I now, all the minutes can be found on YouTube by going to straight to YouTube. So, good job, Erica. So, I would like to change, I'm just gonna change the wording on that to match all the other minutes that we've ever done. And so, it says something about going directly to YouTube, whatever, instead of the tortuous path that I'd been doing. So, that was the only change I wanted.
So, change, the amendment is to change the YouTube direction?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the May 21st minutes as amended?
Aye.
May 21st is approved.
I'd like to make a motion, please, that we approve the June 24th, 2015, regular meeting minutes.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
I'll make the second, but I got questions on this here now that I already voted, or I already made the second.
You made discussion.
I was not at any discussion, I was not at any of these minutes, of these meetings. So, I don't know if I can sit there and vote and make a motion on that.
You can...
Clarify, can I, right?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question, though. Was that the only question you had?
That was it.
Any further discussion on the June 24th? All in favor of passing, approving the June 24th regular minute meetings as written?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Special meetings, June 1st.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on June 1st, 2015.
Second.
No discussion, all in favor of passing the June 1st minutes as written?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Also like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on June 2nd, 2015.
Second.
Discussion on the June 2nd minutes? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on June 5th, 2015.
Second?
Second.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Lastly, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on July 30th, 2015.
Second?
Second.
Before I just start discussion, Steve, I didn't get a aye or nay from you, I didn't hear it, I apologize for the June 5th. Thank you very much, sir, I apologize. 30 July, discussion.
I had a question on that, just because it was, we were, we had, the regular meeting was scheduled, we couldn't have it, so we moved it. Do I need to label it as special meeting, regular meeting? So, now it's like, we didn't have a regular meeting in July, which we didn't. So, is that okay the way that it's labeled, since you were the secretary last year?
Is this, is that inherent anywhere, did we...
All it says is special meeting. So, and I didn't say anything about, this takes the place of our regular meeting, should I put that in? I didn't know what to do, because we hadn't done that before.
We should probably add that to the...
Just put a secretary's note in there?
Yeah, yes, you need to add that.
So, we need to add that at the beginning, right after board members present, if you would please, the secretary's note. No further discussion, all in favor for the, approving the July 30th minutes as amended?
Aye. Aye.
Motion's passed, thank you. All right. Questions on the voucher review, on the vouchers?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the vouchers 6771 through 6808, in the amount of $37,681.59 in payroll transfers from the M&amp;O account to payroll account in the amount of $47,170.46.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
Oh, I wondered what Personnel Services in $900, is that Washington State Department of Enterprise? I didn't understand what that was for, $900.
That is our employee assistance program.
And I know you've told me what it was, I don't remember though.
It's for, without...
Oh, okay.
And in the future, we need to take employees' name out.
Gotcha.
I have a question on the, you clear the resetting of the toilets?
I couldn't, what was that?
Resetting of the toilets? Does our maintenance people not actually do that? Are we paying somebody that...
We had to have some piping done. And it was something Matt felt needed to be done by a professional. We had a toilet knocked off the wall.
And, I'm sorry, I did notice, big smiling face.
I'm gonna interrupt real quick.
Sorry.
Thank you ma'am, I'm sorry. Toilet knocked off the wall, like a urinal knocked off the wall?
No, it was a toilet. Somebody dropped down onto it very, very hard.
So, it skewed the...
It broke.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for clarifying, I appreciate it, go ahead, Ms.
Sorry. 13,000 back into the reserves, as promised, for the budget, good job.
Further questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approving vouchers 671, 6771 through 6808, in the payroll M&amp;O for a total of $84,852.05?
Aye.
Vouchers pass unanimously. On to unfinished business. First thing we need to talk about, as promised, is the pool temperature, the pool temperature review.
There it is.
So, we've ordered the software, do you have any idea when the software is going to be here, before we even start?
Matt has been bothering them two or three times a week to ask them to schedule us. They are not able to schedule us. I asked Matt if this was the only game in town, or whether we could go with somebody else, he said it's the only game in town. So, I tried to give them a call and I got the same answer, and I even was very gruff and grumpy with them. And so, we are working with them to find out what can be done to get them here ASAP. We would ask, we asked them to get an answer to us by mid-September at the latest, since the guy that they really needed to have us talk to is on vacation until September 7th.
So, the guy that we need to talk to, and this is just for the software, the guy we need to talk to for the temperature monitoring software is gone until September the 7th?
That's what they told me.
They have nobody else at this organization that can do this?
That's what they told me.
And can I make...
I asked all those questions.
This is, this is the software that's actually gonna, going to moderate the air temperature, not the water temperature, correct?
Yeah.
I just, I heard you say water before, and I just wanted to be clear.
And by, and by, and by...
I understand, I just want to make sure everybody knows, this is, this is the air temperature, it's not the water temperature, but it will help make the water temperature more moderate.
And the, the problem with this company is because they are the only game in town, anybody else who's having problems with these systems, we've actually told them, we have the money set aside, we're ready to order, we need to schedule.
Can I just ask one question?
No, but go ahead.
I just want to ask if anybody's called Anacortes to see...
Yeah, actually, yes, we do.
Yeah, in order for us to, to do what Anacortes does, we would need to do what Anacortes did and spend about $60,000 on a new boiler.
Can I ask one more question? That's because a new pool boy is gonna cost between $300,000 and $500,000. That's $60,000, it's looking pretty good.
Go ahead.
I, I'm just curious, why not go with somebody else? If this software company is so hard to deal with, it means... You're looking at future problems down the road, isn't there anybody else that would be willing to stand in there?
We asked that question, and they are the only ones that do run this system that we have here, it's a 30-year-old system. we have here, it's a 30-year-old system and it's, sorry, go ahead.
Part of the problem that I mentioned before is we have a 30-year-old system that had no capital improvement plan, so, so we, so no, I'm done with, I'm sorry Shane, I'm not picking on you in particular, but I'm just.
It's three meetings in a row, I don't want to pick on you.
Well, I wasn't here last meeting, so that's not true, so.
I just say I knew.
All right, so.
There's a, there's a former swim parent, I should tell him to order again, he has to work on stuff.
Okay, stop.
May I, may I ask a question?
Yes.
When we voted on this?
Couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, the reasoning behind, I believe some of the individuals who voted against it was, we were going to look and try to keep it at that steady 82 degrees and then we were gonna look at this again, right? I would like to make a motion right now that we immediately, immediately move that temperature to 83 degrees as being our target, that 83 is our target and then we watch that until this system comes in.
Okay.
In September.
So I have a motion to move the pool temperature to 83 degrees, 83 degrees.
I'm sorry.
All right, I got a second to move for the motion to 83 degrees until we have the software system in place.
Then we can properly look at this.
All right, discussion.
Remember we talked about, when we talked about 82 degrees six months ago, or whenever, seven months ago, back in the winter, we were told it's gonna cost us $1,000 per degree to increase the temperature, that's why we set on 82, I'm just saying that, it's like where, where are we gonna cut in the budget to pay for the 83 degrees? And I'm not saying 83 degrees is not a good temperature, I swim laps, I love 83, I love 84.
We'll have more patrons.
No, I'm just saying, we need to think about this and if we, maybe the answer is, if we just freaking change the thermometer, which I have in notes, then maybe we'd be at 82 instead of at 79 or 80, and I don't, I don't know, but that's, that's my comment is, we talked about it, it's $1,000 a month to raise it another, another degree.
It's actually probably going to be more than that, but the thing is, we've been looking at this every which way but sideways since, I wanna think, spring of 2013.
That is correct.
And this thing has been kicked out of the curve several times now and we keep saying the same thing to the people and that is, when we get this system in place, when we get it in place, you know, we really don't know how much it's gonna raise until we do it, not to sound like Nancy Pelosi, but you know, until we pass it, we're really not gonna know, but in this case, there's a lot of truth to that. You know, we really aren't going to know, and you know, we'll have to adjust the budget, but the people of this district, there was a petition that went around, I believe it was summer of 2013, you remember that Sean?
And there was another one.
There were, I wanna think, you know, there were several hundred signatures on that, it's time we as a, we as a, as a district, listen to the people, I believe, so.
Further comments from the board, further comments from the board?
Thank you.
No further comments from the board, all in favor of raising the pool temperature, having the pool temperature set at 83 degrees until the software is loaded and we can revisit it then?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion doesn't pass unanimously, as per the bylaws, I have to do a roll call. Steve?
Aye.
Cecil?
Aye.
Donna Sue?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. So the pool temperature will be raised to 83.
And Matt and I will keep poking at that company's system.
Temperature monitoring software console, so the temperature monitoring software console, this is what we were just talking about, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're having issues with the company.
I'll keep poking at them.
When we poke at them, do we talk to them on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, it has been my limited experience in life, that if we actually send an email, then we have a written documentation, which makes it easier for the board to address the company, should the company fail to address the district and we have a written track record of what happens.
You got it.
Can you send them, please, an email with a drop deadline date, not a drop dead date, but a deadline date, for them to respond with a time that we, guy gets back September 7th from vacation, so we need a date from them.
Okay.
The week of September 7th, that gives them five days to talk to this guy getting back from vacation.
You might just have them schedule him, he gets back and has a.
That would be great, why don't we do that?
Yep, I'll work on it.
An email and then have that for the board at our next board meeting, any further comments from the board on that, is that okay?
The only thing I was gonna sit there and say is, if we don't get nothing back, yeah, I hate to sit there and wait a month, but then the board officially needs to sit there and take some kind of action at our September meeting, if nothing is done, we need to sit there and address that as a board and do something.
Maybe I'll invite them to come and, and address their failure with you guys.
Yes, because they need to be answering to us, why, what's going on, so we can ask to do it to the public. And if they can't do it, well then why?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let them know that they'll be invited to the next board meeting, they can explain themselves.
Further comments on the monitoring software console? All right, insurance update, it says if needed, I put that in there, if we needed it, that was obviously completed at the special meeting, answer your question, yes, we do have, we never lost it, it was still there, and what was funny, just for a taxpayer's note, the company that decided they weren't gonna carry us anymore, actually gave us another quote for this one, which I thought was just bizarre, but then again, I don't deal with insurance, so, who knows?
We'll just fill them in.
Yes, so, thank you very much. New director search, I have a committee, I have a subcommittee, the two commissioners, do you have a report for us?
Me too.
Thank you ma'am.
We suggest the following process, and it'll be a little different than what we did before. And we, a couple of people have expressed interest to you Sean, in taking on the job of an interim director, potentially full-time maybe, so we suggest that we appoint an interim director for six to nine months from among the three people who have expressed an interest. If the board agrees to the above, we'll ask those people for resumes within a week, the date on there is from we were supposed to meet on Monday, and so I'm gonna have to change the date to, I guess the 27th of August. The commissioners will have one week to review the resumes and score on modified weighted skill and fairness, which I have and I'll give to you in a minute if we agree this process, set a special meeting, interviews for, I would say the 9th, 10th, or 11th of September, sometime in there, only because I'm gonna be gone for the Labor Day, set the special meeting for whatever date in September, early September, we will get together and discuss the results of the resume, resume review among ourselves, conduct interviews and make a decision, and then.
Should I have a special, okay.
Yeah, special meeting, and then, you know, the next day enter negotiations, Cecil and I said maybe go on the low end of the pay scale for the interim period, after about six months, we can, we will settle down, we'll have gotten through hopefully some, some of the stuff that, of people that's going now, especially with the board members, and then we can advertise for a full-time director and the person who's the interim director can also apply for the full-time job and go forward. And we are gonna be, in the next couple of months, looking at other avenues of advertising for the full-time director, do we need any position description changes and appropriate levels of compensation, because that might be the problem, why we, you know, didn't get the guy we want is because we don't have enough compensation offered, but our budget sucks, so.
Okay.
So that's, that's our report, that's what we would like the process to be.
My question for the subcommittee, before I put this out there for questions from Commissioner Hoffmeyer also, is one of the things, and my only concern with this, actually, my biggest concern with this is this, one of the problems we had with insurance and in the past is that, the turnover, and not just board members, but also with our directors, you know, Steve and I, I mean, I've been here four years, Steve's been here three, and we're leaving, and so you're gonna have a whole new board, which they're gonna look at, and then you wanna go through two directors in less than a year, so my question to the subcommittee, which, not that I disagree with the process, is why not just do another month, put it out there for another month and go through the process again to hire a permanent?
Basically because we went through that process over five months and looked at the result we got. You had gone through that process and got Gino, who turned out to be a complete, nice guy, and I'm just saying, it's like, maybe this is, we get an interim director who has the potential to be a full-time director and have a look at them.
It's kinda like on-the-job training and then the new board will have a chance to actually vote on whether or not they want that director.
Yes.
For the full-time.
But because we're Republicans, we do have to open it up for, you know, broad application, but this is a, I'm just saying.
Okay.
My biggest concern that there was, and as being a new board member and also going on to sit on for the next one, if the election turns out that way, but the amount of time they sit there and took and were to sit there and find somebody that was qualified and then they turned it down because pay and stuff like that is, you know, nothing against you Erica, you're doing a great job and stuff like that, you know, but there's a lot of people filling a lot of jobs, just doing a lot of things, people are tied up with all type of things, we need to sit there and have somebody, interim director or whatever, as soon as possible, and with, from my understanding, as far as an interim director, we can sit there and do that a lot quicker than as far as hiring somebody, and that was my concern with it and that was one of the reasons why, well, the main reason why I sat there and said, I think that's a great idea, but for that reason, and I know it's been possibly another director out there, but under the same circumstance, you gotta remember, it's only a contract position, whether we contracted one year out, two years out, three years out, whatever, it's still a contract position, so even if we sit there and hire somebody, within a year, the board could sit there and choose to hire somebody else, so we can fall right back and do the same thing, so that's the reason why I pretty much agree with the interim director.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, you have some questions?
I would love to ask someone a question, but I don't know if you would allow that.
Is it a board member?
No, it is not.
Then I would ask you.
It is Ms. Carolyn Pay.
Oh, certainly.
Do you, if you, if you were to look at something like this, would this be kosher? I mean, to see this, to where you have an interim, a person serving as that interim, then to hire another interim with, with the thought of, you know, six months down the road, you know, hiring a permanent position, or would it be more advantageous in your mind, because I value your opinion on this, to hire a, to proceed with hiring a permanent director now? How do you see though? And the reason I'm asking, Mrs. Pay, so everyone knows, her profession is she's a Union Resources and she has vast knowledge in this that I value very much.
It's such a complex time for the district and I think as, you know, the point of, you know, we have to be, of course, this interim position would have to be publicly noticed as well for the, on behalf of the whole district or the part district, I think the challenge is that continuity of leadership and with the turnover in the board, with new board members coming on and relatively newer board members currently sitting on the board, I think that remains a challenge and, you know, ideally you would find the right person and they would be the right person to stay long-term and I would tend to lean more to committing to a search and identifying that right person and certainly there's value in trialing somebody, you know, that can be beneficial at times, but it isn't also always the complete, it is also, you know, somebody's gonna have to inherit all this and really, really seek that experience, you know, none of this is private, the financial circumstances, the cost of the building, every, everything that's transpired in the last few years, so that's kind of what you're working against in addition to, you know, whatever the compensation that might be offered, so, you know, I would, I think I would be as transparent as possible and, you know, better to have that stable long-term candidate, but hard to say if somebody would be long-term.
I think the one thing that Mrs. Pay brought up that I found very, very wrong insight of me was that opening it up, here we're saying that we've identified two or three people and I think that that puts us in a situation where it's not good.
We can't do it without opening it up, it's against, we, we're not allowed to.
I thought we, for interim, I thought, my understanding, because we, this was talked about a while ago, that we could appoint anybody we wanted to.
As a public district, I don't believe we're allowed to do that, and our resolution doesn't let us do that, so we would have to change our resolution.
Well, no, I don't wanna change the resolution, I, I'm sorry, I was told this was, this was okay to just.
I would need to see, I, I don't know about the other board members, but I for one would need to see that.
We didn't.
I would like to see that.
We, we appointed Erica, although she works here, but it was like, we didn't open it up, we just said she's the interim director and that was, the words stuck in my head was, the lawyer's words were, you can appoint anybody you want.
We could appoint, Nathan Manning did say that, that is true, Nathan, our lawyer, yes, did you want to leave?
Let me say a good note, I shouldn't say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you do, all of you, you do, everything you do is with everybody's good intent in mind and you work hard and you try hard and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Nathan did say that, when we looked at Erica, we moved her, that is true, how it would go to filling somebody from the outside, I'd wanna ask Nathan again, that's gonna be a little bit difficult because Nathan has left for a job in.
The Midwest someplace.
The Midwest.
Okay.
So, however, I'm sure we can still get an answer on that, and we can ask, we have to ask MRSC, I think we should, did we ask MRSC when we looked at this? I know we just, did we fall back on what Nathan said is?
I called MRSC.
What did MRSC say?
MRSC said there really isn't anything that would prevent you guys from naming whomever you wanted to as an interim, however, they cautioned very much against not doing a permanent search and getting the right person in there, they advised that you guys would open it up, it would make you more transparent, it says it doesn't look good when you're playing musical interims, is what the guy said, and he said it would, if it were his district, he would advise that you opened it up to a permanent solution.
I don't know who these three individuals are, I have heard some names, I think there are, there are board members that have talked to some of them, that said, if these three people are very interested, then these three people would write on it, as well as anyone else who's out there, and like, I think, I think what Cecil said, it's, it's a contract position anyway, you know, I would like to move, I would like to see us move towards a permanent director versus a interim director, and these three people, whoever they are, they should be encouraged to write on that, and if they are someone that several board members, or at least one, thinks that they are qualified to lead this district, they must have some pretty good qualifications and I would love to see what they have, to see who they are, so.
I just, I did not wanna go through what we went through last year and I wasn't even, I was a board member for the last couple of months only of that, and it's like, we have been so bereft for a while and so that was, that was our concern and, you know, if we, if we made the right choice, oh my God, thank you Lord, but my concern is, what if we end up with someone who just looks good on paper, interviews well, and we end up with a disaster?
And that's where that six-month review that's in our, currently in our bylaws covers that, so there is the six-month review that the board does of the director in six months and that's where that would be covered, so I tend to agree with Steve with transparency and I think Steve said something that was really good, if I was one of the three people that had contacted the chair and said, hey, I'd love to do the job, A, I'd wanna be transparent because I'm going into this position, you know, with all the bullets flying, it's better to be transparent and to be, have, be able to say, wait a minute, I went through the process with everybody else, you know, because then we're not setting somebody up for failure. You know, if we just appoint somebody, limit it to a certain number of candidates, then we're setting people up for failure, I think if we open up to everybody, then we're not setting one of those people up for failure because they're judged equally among all their peers, and I think our six-month review would, or your six-month review of that individual would be. would be the time where the board can say, "Oh, I don't think that's such a good idea." You know, you need to either go or make these changes.
No, and, and I agree, it needs to be transparent, and I didn't want to not be transparent, but I was just trying to have...
Yep.
Erica, and you can, you know, like I said, you were the only person we could have put in the job when we put you in the job, but things are falling through the cracks, and you know who they are, because it just, you can't do three jobs, you can't.
Um, I, as we're considering this, um, and I do think we do need to move toward a permanent solution sooner rather than later, um, I would, you know, as the director stand-in, um, I would like to also bring the staff into this. Having to adjust for another director's way of doing things is a, is always a challenge in that, you know, you're, you're trying to feel out what they're doing and what they would like us to do, and how they would like us to perform, and what are some things they would like to see us do. There's a lot that needs to be done, and if we're going to get one guy in and then take him out and put somebody else in, there's training that we all have to do and backup off of the jobs that we're trying to get done every single day and work with this new person to try and get them up to speed, and then they're gone, and then somebody else, and we repeat the process. And it's going to be very difficult, especially on the department heads, to make sure that we do keep things running as best we can if we're continuously happy to retrain somebody else. And the board, they, they can't do it. They don't know what goes on here every day.
Actually, we're not supposed to do it.
And you're not supposed to do it.
Key right there. All right, so looking at the suggestion and what we've talked about, um, we, we need to come up with a way for it, we needed to go forward with that tonight, so, um...
I don't, I don't mind going through the process, I would just like to accelerate it and not take quite so long as we did perhaps.
What's the minimum time that we can do? I know the maximum time is 10 years probably, but what's the minimum?
We have, we have to, no, unfortunately, we have to leave it open for a month according to our current bylaws.
Thirty days.
However, we can amend, but we're, we have to have a resolution to amend the bylaw.
Yeah, changing bylaws is pretty difficult.
So, yeah, so if, if we opened it, say, tomorrow, it would have to be open until 28th, 4th, 11th, till the 18th. Or that's the 11th. One, that's seven, 14, 21, and the 11th.
If you were to Monday, Sean?
If we open it Monday, it would have to go to, whoops, didn't seem to get button happy, it's the 28th, 7th through the 28th.
Oh, because you need one...
How long was it open before?
A month. Actually, the last time we left it open for how long?
It was six weeks.
Six weeks.
Forever.
It was six weeks.
And then what was the total number of applicants that we got?
Fifteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah, thirteen, fourteen.
And how many dropped out before?
Uh, we had two drop out, two to four drop out in the process.
Three.
Three? Okay, see, two to four, three, I split it.
If we get it posted on Monday, that'll give you guys the end of end tweak for the morning.
We'd have to tweak it tonight, or we'd have to come back and do a special meeting. So if we were going to tweak, we'd have to tweak it tonight.
Well, I know before you sent me the format for the ad, but the day after...
Right, the ads, the ads one thing, but PD, yeah, we can't tweak at PD.
No, that's what I mean, the ad.
One thing you want to do is you want to list the salary.
Yeah.
Because we can't make that mistake again.
All right, so mention the salary later, Steve, remember that, please. So if we open it on the 20, on the 7th to the 28th? And then, when would you want to accelerate it for program? For, um, if we closed on the 28th, we review the applications, special meeting on what day? First? Or the 30th?
30th.
So, open it till 7th to the 28th.
Sean?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we getting the 7th from?
The September, oh, thank you, I'm going in the wrong month, thank you so much, Julie.
If you have it on August 24th.
August 24th. Thank you, Julie.
I was wondering that too.
One. One, two, three, four, so that would close the 21st. Everybody check my math there, 21st, thank you, Julie.
Why don't you want to have it close on the 25th, which is a Friday? Because the 31st is Monday, have it close till 25th.
You know, and we're going to, we're starting to put the horse...
Before the cart.
Before the cart. Can I, can I get a motion that we actually do this before, because we're actually getting out of the subcommittee report, and we're starting to discuss something, and then to make things right, we need a motion.
Exactly.
So if I could get a motion.
I move that we go with the old, our, our initial scheme of, and what's in, as we do the bylaws, to move forward in finding a new director.
So we have a motion to start immediately to move forward and find a new director according to our bylaws, do I have a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss this, thank you very much, that was my mistake. So if we open this as per the discussion on the 24th, and then what day did you suggest we close it there, Cecil?
The 25th, which would be the Friday.
September the 5th, 25th?
The 24th.
August 24th.
August 24th it opens, it goes till September 25th, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then for, for, um, applications?
Okay, real quick, no later than, um, what time, we're going to pick out a time or midnight on the 25th?
Well, uh, the 25th, we close at 10:00.
10:00, 10:00 P.M.
10:00 P.M. on a Friday.
All right. With a application review, a resume review...
And you want the, the subcommittee to do that again?
To, in the interest of saving time, last time we got 15, I think we should just have a special meeting and have all of us review in the interest of time.
I love that.
All in, okay, a resume review on when, so we close September the 25th?
That Monday.
The 3rd, 30th?
30th would work. Monday wouldn't, one of us works.
Well, Monday night football, is that not true?
I wasn't thinking of that, but I, I actually can't get out of work. So September the 30th, application, resume review.
Okay.
Interviews.
And meeting 7:00 P.M.?
7:00 P.M., yes, sir. So interviews then... October the 3rd?
On a Saturday?
That's when we did them last time. Would you guys like to push it off till Monday? Monday evening?
Monday would be better for me.
October the 5th, Skype interviews, like we did last time? That way it's fair and you go across the playing field.
Seven o'clock as well, or?
We started at 18, pardon me, 6:00 P.M. So 6:00 P.M. then for the 5th?
I, I won't be here, I'll be...
You'll be gone.
Yeah, but that's okay.
Okay.
Great, great plan, great timing.
And...
We're, uh...
Do we do it at Skagitowna College?
We'll do it at Skagitowna College. And then a special meeting. We're going to do a special meeting on the 6th to bring the final candidates, or to discuss the final candidates.
I'm good, man, whatever day it is, I want to get it done.
October 6th, special meeting to discuss finals candidates.
Same time?
6? 6:00 P.M. Last time we narrowed it down to two. Do we want to leave that special meeting to discuss final candidates, or leave that open for final interviews? We have to have now, because we can't vote on final interviews if we do interviews on the 5th. If we do interviews on the 5th, we can't discuss anything in those interviews, all we can do is leave after we do the interview.
But on the 6th, when we discuss the final interviews...
On the 6th, we did discuss the final candidates, that's correct.
And the final candidate, right.
Because we can have no discussion on the 5th.
Only 8th, sit there and do the final?
October...
On the voting card?
8th, special meeting. So, October the 8th, we do what, Cecil?
That's when we would do the, uh, choose a final, who are we going to pick?
So are you setting two meetings to do interviews, is that what the 5th and the 6th are?
No, the 5th is a Skype interviews, the 6th is to discuss the interviews, because we can't discuss the interviews.
And I understood that, so why a meeting on the 8th? Why wouldn't you just make a decision on the 6th?
I thought, you, you said we're doing, kind of down...
What we've done in the past, since we're talking about the past, what we've done in the past is after the Skype interviews, we then went and invited the top two to come in for a in-person interview.
Ah.
And did the two, full day interview. So if we're doing that on the 6th, we're discussing that on the 6th, we decide who those two final candidates are on the 6th, we're going to need more than two days because we also do background checks on, on everybody.
Gotcha.
And everything else, we'll need more than two days before, and the candidates may need more than two days before they're able to...
That's approximately a week we would be taking on that, so...
So, October, October 13th, just a week later.
That sounds fantastic, Steve, October 13th for final interviews.
6:00 P.M.?
Um, time to be determined, since that way we can talk to the candidates. We don't know if they're going to be local or not, and how they're going to get here, so that time for the 13th meeting will be set on October 6th.
Gotcha.
Is that okay with everybody here?
Right.
Okay. To be determined, whoops, to be determined.
Now, do we have to sit there and say on the 6th, we're down to the two or three or how?
Top candidates, we can say the top candidates, it can be as many as we want to invite for final interviews, that's what we've done in the past. Now, before we get, once again, put the cart in front of the horse, what we've done in the past is we've asked for volunteers from the community. Do we want to do that as we're waiting for resumes? We have a month open for app, for application period, do we want to ask for people from the community to come sit on the interview panel, as we have done in the past?
We did it last time, and we got no response, and, but that doesn't mean we won't consent, so...
All right. So at the same time that we put out the, um, notice for the job application, we'll also on the website ask for, um, if there's anybody in the community that would like to, okay, that'd be great.
So how do we choose those people?
Well, we'll choose those people on the September meeting, regular meeting, because that's going to be before the resume review.
So should we ask for letters of interest?
Let, a, a quick email or letter of interest prior to the September meeting.
Have them send it to me, please, thank you.
Yes, not to me, but to her. And prior to the September 17th meeting, so on that one, let them know they have until close of business on the 16th, so that you can get that, or Erica can get that list to us by the 17th.
Would you, uh, what would you think about, like, there's two individuals that will be running for...
They'll have, just, right now, they're private citizens.
Okay.
They have just as much right as any other, no, yep, I totally agree. And if they come in, I would suggest that we highly encourage them to be part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
So... And just like in the past, I will say this, and you brought it up, and like all the interviews, the, the people that voted were the commissioners, not...
Not, totally agree.
Yep. So, um, yes, sir? All right, is any other further discussion on moving forward with a hiring of a director, starting the hiring process for the director in accordance with the bylaws? All right, so we have a motion on the floor to hire, start the hiring process for the new director according to the bylaws. All in favor of that motion with the timeline provided during discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Julie, if we can use the same thing we put out last, the announce, job announcement we put out last time, except this time, please put the salary range as per the bylaws in that announcement.
Yes.
Okay.
And if we want that on Monday?
If we could, please, in the same, in the same sources we used last time as per the bylaws.
Pop my list for Monday.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Further discussion on the new director search?
Um, okay, so we also got together and talked about changing the, um, what do we call it, the skill identifier list, because the last time it was very heavy input on pool knowledge, and now over time, my time on the board is like, pool knowledge is something that you can actually gain fairly quickly, other things not so much. So, this is the new weighted skill identifier list we came up with, do you guys want to look at the old one that I, we showed you months ago, so you can see what the, more easily see what the changes are?
I would...
Yes, you want to see. So that's the new one. This is the old one, and what we did, just, we added one new one on the bottom, which is the one in red, and then also, um, just moved some stuff around as far as changed the weights.
Oh, shoot.
Here's the whole, turn it down.
Okay. I'd like to have a little time to look at this.
Yes.
So, uh, if there's no objection, can, and, and I won't stifle any discussion among the board members, I'm not trying to do that, but I would like to say we look at this for a month and bring this up at next month's meeting as I'm finished business, to go with the director's search, is that okay with everybody? Is there anything anybody wants to say?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so we'll move to talk, when we talk about the...
I will say, it doesn't change, um, because the original one was originally, the original one was taken directly from the position description in the handbook, and this, the only thing we added was, um, the experience with fundraising, grant writing, and reordered it and made other things more important than others, but, so there's not really a change, and it's still taken from the position description that's in the handbook, so...
Anything further on the new director search?
No.
Thank you both for your hard work, your time and your effort, and a lot more to come. Strategic planning, we haven't talked about that, as we've been waiting for a new director, I suggest we push that off again, unfortunately, until we get a new director, as a lot of that has to do with our new budget for 2016, and staffing and programs, so, any objection to that? All right, program review, fee schedule, you know, one thing, uh, before I get to that, where's, it's on the back, sorry, program review, let's talk about the program review. We have a motion to take a five-minute break, and you know what, we don't need a motion for that, I can just call for a five-minute break, it's 8:28, we're going to come back at 8:35.
Thank you.
What do we do when all of us aren't here, do we just like, as long as three people have signed a test?
That's correct, it's all the county needs.
It's a quorum.
It's a quorum, as per the bylaws. We'll, uh, call the meeting back into order at 8:35.
Thank you.
Our next, um, oh, thank you, ma'am, our next piece of business is the...
Thank you.
Program review, thank you very much. Ms. Joya, would you please hand that to us? I think you need that, or Ms. Julie?
Yes, I do.
I thought you...
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am? So, here's the program review, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, okay, um, fee changes, I don't want to talk about that tonight without Wendy being here, other than to say, um, Sean, Steve, you were right in that to do open swim at Anacortes is $3.50, but if you are one person who goes in the pool, and that was what I specifically stated when I was comparing fees, was that a one person walking in to do lap swim in the morning session, it's $6, it's what they state, it's what it is.
$6 for lap time and...
Yeah.
$3.50 for open swim?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, but, but a one adult entry fee to their pool, other than for open swim, and it, it is $6.
Okay.
So, not a liar, thank you very much. Okay, so in order to show you, I was wondering, you know, where the prices had started and stuff like that, so this graph that I gave you shows that, um, Anacortes started at some point, I don't know what their opening price was when they opened their pool in the early, mid-seventies, but we were at the same price in 1986, we opened in '83 at a dollar fifty. The boxes on the graph show, those are price points that I actually... The boxes on the graph show, those are price points that I actually know they were data. And so it shows, um, Bellingham started in nineteen ninety-five, they started at the price we are at today, they're now, and I'm showing the four fifty price, which is the in-city district, in-city price, and their five dollars for out-of-city price, we don't have an in- and out-of-district price.
And this is for open swim, correct?
No, this is for one adult coming in to use the pool, so it's not, it's, their open swim, they have the same price in Bellingham, but we don't have a separate open swim price other than all the discounts and stuff, so I didn't realize that there was such a thing. But this is the one adult person coming in to use the pool.
So, um, Anacortes, for one person to use the pool, it's six bucks?
Yes, they come in in the morning to do lap swim.
What's the, what's the three, what's that?
Not to do an open swim show.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's three fifty.
So, three fifty for open swim, so if I take my kids there, I'm getting three fifty a person to do open swim?
Well, three fifty for you, their kids are gonna be less, I think.
Okay.
But this is, we were, we were just trying to compare one apple across the road, across the way, and it was an adult entry fee charge.
If I may, sit there and add to it, right here is their schedule, are their fees and stuff, and, uh, as far as children, three and under, it's two dollars, open swim for a family is twelve dollars, as everybody said, open swim is three fifty, noon swim or fitness center is three fifty, combo, uh, pool, fit and classes is eight dollars, pool or fitness is six dollars, so, it sounds like some of theirs, and I'm not for sure how our fees are done, but they may have some stuff pulled together more so than we do, and that may be something we look at or something like that, but, and this is for September, June twenty-first through September seventh.
Anyway, I just wanna show you.
Take a pair.
Where we started and that we haven't kept up with the others. Now, is it, is it true that we don't offer as much as the others? Uh, yeah, probably, but then, you know, it's like, we don't have the money to do that, because we, you know, for whatever reason, mismanagement, not charging enough, I don't know. So, that is, I, like I said, I don't wanna get into a further discussion on it until Wendy is here.
Any further comments from Commissioner? Yes, please.
I'd like to further discuss the funding, please. If we're gonna compare apples to apples, you made reference apples to apples, then you really have to start with the pool. We have six lanes of water, we have a waiting pool, and we have a small hot tub. If you look at Anacortes, it's a very unique pool in fact, it's a twenty-five meter pool and a twenty-five yard pool, if you set it up for twenty-five meters to give you the same lanes that we have, I think it's eight lanes instead of six, is it six?
It's six and six.
Okay, it is six, okay.
Yeah.
So it's six, then you have your two wings on the side, which can be used for a multitude of things, from swimming lessons and stuff, to whatever you wanna use it for. They have a pretty sweet water slide, they don't have a hot tub, and although it is true, the three fifty for both, for open swim, the one thing I found interesting was what they pay for their M and O. Right now, they currently pay eleven dollars and forty-two, well.
What's M and O?
It's the maintenance and operations cost. It's eleven point four-two cents per thousand, ours is seventeen cents per thousand. They're getting ready to ask for an increase on their maintenance and operation levy to thirteen ninety-four per hundred thousand, or, what, a dot, uh, you know, thirteen point nine four cents per thousand, significantly less than what the people of O'Carver pay, or of our district, rather, uh, pay for our maintenance and operational levy. So when we go to compare things, not only do we have to look at what our pool looks like, I like how you pointed out the median income, any O'Carver people, O'Carver make less money than people in Bellingham and Anacortes, but then you also look at the maintenance operational levy that our public has passed.
No, we make, we make more money than Bellingham.
We do?
Yes.
The median income is higher.
So, let's look at Anacortes, then. So, Anacortes, we make less money in O'Carver than they do in Anacortes, yet we pay more for our maintenance and operation levy than they do in O'Carver, I mean, than, than Anacortes. So I don't know how we get into this comparing things, and I really don't understand the logic of increasing our fees by forty percent for an open swim, we're not talking about.
Yeah.
Can I, can I interrupt?
Oh, yeah.
Um, Commissioner Holly did ask, and I, and I'm just gonna, hold on, I'm, what I'm gonna say is, if there's something for the board to think about till next month, I think I would love to hear it.
Okay, then what I would like to think about, let's compare apples to apples.
Excuse me, that's enough.
Let's compare apples to apples.
Stop, we will take a five-minute recess, the board's having a five-minute recess. Oh, yeah. I will call the meeting back into session at eight forty-five. Commissioner Holly, I was by no means trying to stifle your comments, all I was asking, and I think you agreed, was to give us stuff to think about, which we were, so, please continue, yes, please, please, continue.
Apples to apples, oranges to oranges, if we're gonna look at this thing, we have to look at more than just what the cost is for each of the districts, we have to look at what those pools have to offer, how much, uh, when we look at maintenance operational levies, how much are the people already paying in those districts? The one thing about the city of O'Carver, I mean, there's a large population of people in O'Carver that don't necessarily pay property taxes even, and we, and we know that, uh, so you've got, we're very unique in the fact that we live in a military town, and God bless them, we live in a military town, and that is part of it, and I think to expect people to pay what they pay in Bellingham, or they're paying in Port Townsend, it's, when we look at a product, we need to consider this, what are we offering the people of this district? We're going to increase the, the cost for the product, but have we really increased the product itself? We haven't, and I think the one thing we really need to consider going forward is to really ask ourselves, we may actually do the exact opposite, we may not even increase revenue, what we may do is actually decrease revenue. So I would ask that we at least look into, when we compare things, let's compare them equally, and I would like to see, I guess, the, what the maintenance operational levy is, if Bellingham has one, I'd like to know it, if Port Townsend have one, I'd like to know that.
Bellingham's pool is, their facility is paid for by the city, so it's the city budget paying for it.
So that's a very unique pool in itself there.
It is, but it happens to be in the area, so that's why we're trying to look at, what is the market gonna bear, and that's why, when Bellingham opened their pool in ninety-five, they set their price probably right where Anacortes was, which is exactly what we did, and I'm just pointing, we were pointing out, it's like, we have not kept up with what other pools in the area are charging, and yes, we don't have as much to offer perhaps, but we don't have the money to do that, we don't have the money to pay our basic, um, maintenance cost, you know, things are falling apart, as we've been talking about, we can't even keep the pool heated to the reasonable thing. So, the other, I'm sorry, and so, I'm gonna think about the price raises, fee increase, did you want something, have to say something else?
No, just, I'd like us to look at, you know, if we're gonna compare, let's compare, I think Bellingham has to be brought out of the equation because it's a city park.
Can I make a suggestion? Since they're looking at the, since the, the committee of Donna Sue and Wendy are looking at the fee structure, could I ask you to look at what we offer as compared to the other pools, as far as programs? And can you also, at the same time, ask for M and Os and, uh, what their levies are? Would you mind doing that?
Yeah.
Alright, that way, when we look at this next month, we, will you be, no, you're not gonna be able to do all that in a month, will you?
Most of it's probably correct, I mean, that's not a fact, Anacortes is.
Okay, you think you'll be able to have that in a month, so we can look at it all together?
But I don't think we'll be able to use the same ones that they've used as examples, for example, Bellingham's a city pool, it's not a special taxing district like we are. Look back to the apples and apples, you're gonna have to find special taxing districts in the area, is what you're gonna have to find, and by doing that, you know, I mean.
Port Angeles isn't even set up the same way, they are set up as a city.
They're a pool, and they charge a fee.
We're already charging a fee with the maintenance and operation levy, though, you're already charging the people.
Yes, you are.
So, I mean, I, I mean, if you've got two pools, and one pool isn't charging any maintenance and operation levy, and this one is, you can't compare them at all on the pricing structure.
So since we and Anacortes are similar districts, could you bring that information for Anacortes next month? Thank, thank you.
Maybe you can compare, because the money has to come from somewhere, what the city pays for Bellingham's, um, you know.
Well, let's look at Anacortes and us.
Okay.
That's the high end and the medium end.
That's it.
They should be close.
Okay.
And that'll give us more of a cross, that, that was your concern, correct?
That is my concern.
Okay.
And it just, the point is, we haven't kept up.
Okay.
That was Wendy's and my thoughts.
Alright, so we'll hear from both parts of that committee, and Steve, next month, yes?
In response to that, the point is, we want to make this as cost-effective as we can, to be responsible to the people of this district.
Yes.
Great, alright, and we're starting this process now, and it's something that's probably not going to be finished in the next couple months, um, so, um, it'll be good to go forward with this. Um, pro, uh, that's, fee schedule, we're still doing maintenance list, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so remember the fee, the maintenance list?
Yes.
Uh, this is, and remember, this is Matt's maintenance list, there was a, it was an email he sent me, when I asked him, what are your top ten? And he sent it to me, I went to him, and I talked to him, and found out for him, here's what it would cost, if he had it cost, some of the stuff is just a guess, and then, um, and it's, I think it was in his priority, but I don't know that it's in his priority, we never prioritized it, Wendy and I recommended that this list actually become a product of the, um, the board, and that we look at it and have it in front of our faces once a month, so we are working toward getting these things done and fixed, and so that that is in the forefront of our mind as we're looking at budget issues.
Is there any reason we can't add this to the maintenance, uh, report every month?
No, you could do that.
That would be the appropriate place to me, that way it comes to, and from the maintenance supervisor as part of a monthly report, discussion from the rest of the board. Alright, we'll add that to the maintenance report every month. And then we order the heat exchange software, that's what we were talking about, right?
We told them that we wanted to order it, I don't know whether they, I didn't wanna really send money before, I had dates.
No, I totally agree. Alright? So this will become part of the maintenance report, thank you.
And, fitness club. Fitness club is, um, this is a program we really, really, really like, it's got lofty goals, good target audience, building right skill sets in children, it's affordable, it requires no equipment, a low invison for the district and the patrons, Brad's doing a great job with kids, as far as we know. Problem right now is that it is not paid for itself, and there are, we don't wanna away with it, we wanna keep it, um, absolutely for the, you know, short time the rest of this year, and for next year. Looking at it, the club fee is currently twenty-four dollars a month, twenty dollars if you're in the same family for other children, with the first week free, and it's supposed to run from April to September, which was about twenty-six weeks if they start on the April first, I don't know if it was halfway into April or whatever, but, so assuming the above twenty-six weeks, the cost is, um, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Assuming all the kids are different families, they are being charged twenty-four dollars a month, that works out to a dollar and eighty-five cents a session, per child, which is like, that's the cheapest babysitting you'll find anywhere. But to break even because of how much it costs for Brad, you need seventy-five dollars a week, which means you need thirteen students, and we've had nine, have we kept nine all summer, or?
Yeah.
Is it number?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty consistent, yeah.
Okay, so, um, if we charge thirty dollars a month, then, um, you're still not gonna pay for it, thirty-five dollars a month, almost pay for it, so, uh, our recommendations were, discontinue the free week, just, I mean, 'cause, you know.
Which I think he only did that when he first kicked off.
Okay.
So I don't think it's very ongoing.
But don't even, not offer it, but offer, just pay for a week, you don't have to pay a whole month or whatever.
Yeah.
And then, if decide they say, you can charge per month with a monthly maintenance fee, or let them pay for the whole summer right up front, and then they want to pay that extra, whatever the maintenance fee would be. Um, do you increase the price, you know, there's gonna be some good point, and it's like, because again, affordable, really affordable, and what a great program. Don't start the program without ten kids signed up in April, uh, that was our recommendation. Don't continue after June first without sufficient patrons to pay for the program. Need to come up with a better advertising campaign, and I put better parents, because I'm not sure it was advertised, I think if there was advertising, oh my gosh, you could so have so many members, 'cause I think it's such a good way for the kids to come and not be spending time in front of a computer. Um, partner, yeah, partner with community resources for discounted entry fees to existing five Ks, that's just something Brad might think about. Research extending the existing swim partnerships, MWR, um, ICJ, FCS, to include this program as something that they would either pay completely for, or partially, or something like that, and so, these are just ideas to help the program work better, but it's a great program, we, we really like this one.
And they have a lot of fun with it.
Good.
And the only thing I would say on that is that June first, um, I know that we had a big increase in participation at least, after my school was out.
And I did think about that, so maybe, maybe, well, then maybe what we need to do is not start it anymore.
Maybe not start it.
Okay, so, anyway, this, that was just recommendations, we do like the program, we want it to do, we want it to be successful, so, as we're thinking about the program for next year, we need to think about, you know, how to do that, and we, we have a solid data point of, this is how much it costs us to have Brad, so.
Nice to hear what Brad has to say.
I talked to him when I did the program review.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree, but I mean, give Brad an opportunity to address the board, too.
Okay.
So, um.
I'll invite him.
He's pretty laid back.
He is.
He, I don't think he wants to do any of the business part of it, and.
And this runs out in September?
They, yeah, they're going through the, like, the twenty-sixth, I think they're having a five K.
They are.
And then, we're in hiatus until next April again.
Correct.
Okay, so something for the new board to think about, maybe invite Brad back in January.
Good idea.
Question.
Cecil?
Uh, as far as, you said on the twenty-sixth, he's gonna be doing a five K, you know, for the end of the program, is he doing any kind of, uh, big run with it, I mean, is there, is it just to the kids here, or is it being opened up to other things where you can bring more money in, you can use that there also for a big fundraiser at the end of the year?
We asked him, and he said he hadn't had plans to do that, it was just a competition for the kids and their families, um, I think that it would be a great way to do a fundraiser, I'll put it out to him again.
And this year is obviously too late.
No, not for September twenty-sixth, by November, oh, no.
Good.
See whether he can throw something together, he's got four weeks.
Okay.
I'll mention it to him again.
Further discussion on the fitness club? Alright, other aerobics.
Aerobics, Wendy and I talked about how to do this, and we were like, you know, the fitness is, we thought the fitness program, because, you know, it is a, not making money this year, and we're like, okay, that's gonna be a bad news story, let's go with aerobics, which is a good news story, and I was actually surprised to find aerobics is not as good, a good news story as I thought, and before anybody, like, chops my, my head off, recommendation number one, we're gonna, we can never get rid of aerobics, so, there are nineteen classes per week total, these pretty much remain static because the staff is afraid of sending the patrons, I'm sorry, I was being snarky when I put that, but, but it's kind of true. Um, they meet four times on Wednesday and Friday, there are three on Mondays, two on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and one water volleyball, two zumba, and one Saturday morning aerobics or whatever kind of class they have. Sessions are one hour each, and the instructors are paid, I'm assured by Erica, one, for one and a quarter hour to set up and take down, the extra quarter hours to set up and take down, and, um, when I talked to Michelle in March, she said, oh, it's, you know, it's an hour and a quarter, to an hour and a half, so, but, um, Erica's been cracking the whip and making them take only an hour and a quarter. So we have five instructors, um, the zumba instructor is at the highest rate, she gets seventeen dollars an hour, um, because she's certified.
Specialized.
Specialized, but she still gets that seventeen dollars an hour if she's, if she has to step in and take one of the other aerobic classes. The other instructors are paid ten dollars to fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents an hour, depending on their seniority and certification. The average amount they're paid is eleven dollars and eighty-one cents. The current aerobic price is four dollars per, per session, um, and I was told by Michelle, most people do get passes. If you assume other programs are paying for the lifeguard, with one instructor for one and a quarter hour, and using the ten dollar per hour lowest paid, the cost is twelve one and a quarter hour, and using the $10 per hour lowest paid, the cost is $12.50 for one session. So you need four patrons to pay for the instructor. And we get that, if, but that's if everybody is, is paying that, I walk in the door and I give you $4 and say, I'm going to go take an aerobics class. The highest paid instructor, for just aerobics, at $15.61 an hour, that cost is $19.51, you need five full paying patrons to make her salary, and we still, that's still good, we have, we have those numbers. Um, the Zumba instructor needs six full paying students, also, still good, and her classes are heavily over, heavily...
They're over 20.
Yeah, they have lots and lots of people doing Zumba, so, awesome, yes. So I got the data from our, the sheets that you gave me, so, the first four months of this year, we paid the aerobics instructors a little over $6,000 for 17 weeks, for 2,000 students. So that was 125 students per week, there's about six to seven patrons per session is what it works out to. The aerobics revenue for this period, however, was just under $4,000. So, the problem is, people that are buying passes, they may have paid for them last year, so it's, I realized, oh my gosh, you can't really tell if aerobics is paying for itself, I do not know. I still think, in a lot of ways, it probably is paying for itself and then some, but, um, so I, I thought, let me try, so, um, Harvey Wannedance bought a 10 punch pass at the in-district rate, so it cost him...
Oh no.
$3.13 for each session. So, four of the, in, the 10 punch pass students will pay for a $10 per hour instructor. Zumba requires seven of these students, so if you want to see, on the two pages in, I have the whole, it's, it's in a line diagram, whatever. Berta Horniswabel got an annual pass, it cost her $330. She comes religiously to aerobics, four to five times a week, so she's only going once a day, but, so it's, it takes nine of her to pay for the lowest paid aerobics instructor, it takes 15 of her to pay the Zumba instructor's salary. Suzie Sweetcheeks also bought an annual pass, but she only goes twice a week, so it's, only takes four of her to pay for the 10-hour instructor, seven for the Zumba instructor. Olivia Livesgood, she comes and attends several aerobic sessions, three days a week, so she comes and she spends the whole morning in the pool. So she's only paying 85 cents per aerobic class. I honestly don't know how many people like that there are, because the aerobics instructors don't break it out, no one breaks it out, how many multiple people they have. And then some people, I've been told, some people come in, they pay the regular fee, they don't pay for aerobics. So, there's all these kind of machinations that I don't, you know, the problem is, we just don't know. We know how many people are, are in the aerobics class, because the aerobics instructors count heads, but they don't tell us how many repeats there are, and they don't know whether somebody's paid for the aerobics or not. Um, so, on my, this sheet, it shows you currently what people are paying. With the proposed fee increase, that was the, um, the committees' proposed fee increase, how many people it would take, and then with the staff fee increases, which were just the 10% increase across the board. So, it makes a difference. So, our recommendations were retain aerobics, obviously. And we had to come up with this cap the pay rate at $15 an hour, because when I talked to Michelle back in March, she told me that the highest paid person was herself at 17, whatever she was getting paid, and that was, we weren't going to cap her because she was the, um, department head, or department head, but, um, and then I talked to Erica yesterday because I was like, I wonder how much they are getting paid now, and it's like, our Zumba instructors gets more, and so, I guess, ignore that one, number two is just, it's already, it's already gone. Leave aerobic supervision under the direct control of the aquatics director, I think you can easily do that when we, when we aren't beating you up to be the director, and that way we don't have to pay somebody else to be the supervisor.
Absolutely.
Uh, review patron usage for the 2016 spring schedule. Reallocate for other usage sessions, sessions which do not routinely draw at least six students. And, and, you know, it might be fined, and I don't know if there are any that don't get for six people.
Rarely.
Yeah, not very often.
And that's probably, it's, you know, we'll probably leave it as it is. Price the aerobics sessions more than the standard admission per the proposed fee schedule. Limit sessions or pay more, meaning, if someone comes in and they take three, you know, are they paying for those three, or unless, like I said, if they're, if they're on a pass, I have an annual pass and I've, since the time I bought it, I think I've been here in some, four times, so, I'm not, I'm not even Suzie Sweetcheeks, I'm like, idiot person who buys an annual pass.
And the annual passes, the way that they are structured right now, I cannot allocate those funds, if somebody purchases your $333 pass, there's no way I can make that be allocated to aerobics.
Exactly.
It all just goes into general admission.
Exactly.
And it would be really nice when you guys were redoing the structure, if there was some way we could do that, because then aerobics would get their full credit.
Um, and then, in my, we've talked about this one before, devise some way of marking the aerobic students who have paid, and whether it's, you know, the laminated cards, a rubber bracelet, but they come in and say, I'm going to take aerobics, and if they're on an annual pass, that's fine, because I could do that, I could come in and say, I'm going to take an aerobics class, you give me whatever, I go swim my laps, and then I slide into it, because I've paid my annual pass, I can do that, and that's fine, you know, and I'm not, I'm not saying that we need to come down hard on anyone who's using an annual pass and, you know, sitting in the pool all day, I just think we need to be aware, maybe that some, some people are doing that, and, and it happens, so, that was our, it's just whooshy, and I, I don't know what the right answer is.
Do we use a wristband for people that are staying for the second swim on Friday nights? I wonder if we can do something similar for aerobics people when they come in?
Yeah, so that, you know...
So that the instructor, no, oh yeah, they pay.
And that's, that's what I would, I would, and if you, you bought an annual pass, you've paid for aerobics, so it's like, I'm completely fine with that, I just think there's a way, so that the instructor's not required to, did you pay, did you, you know, and they don't, and I know they don't, but it's like, that way at least, you would know that they either have the, the, um, the 10 punch pass for aerobics, or, or they bought an annual pass, and so...
Absolutely.
Anyway.
Questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, how did the staff come to their, to make your recommendations, I would like to know that.
We went with what we have now, looked at Anacortes Pool, looked at Bellingham, looked at, where was one other one?
Fort Angeles.
Fort Angeles, no, there was one other one.
Yeah, we went to Linwood.
Linwood and Port Townsend, I think was the other one. And we, um, looked at what they were charging, and we went, we tried to bring ours up to what, to be competitive with theirs, we didn't want to be way under or way over.
And I think we also really consider the structure of our community here, and what they can bear at any given time. And I know, my approach personally, and I think Erica was kind of in the same place, was, yes, unfortunately, we need to raise fees to pay for some maintenance issues, but, it needs to be done incrementally and in a way that people can absorb it.
But if you look at the numbers, it's pretty much 10, it's really close to 10% straight across the board, I mean, within a couple of degrees, which is also, I mean, it's not a bad way of doing it, we just...
I'd like to interrupt.
Oops, sorry.
I'd like to direct, redirect everybody towards the aerobics report. We commented, and I'm sorry, Steve, we commented, I'll let you ask your question again, so you can get more answers. Questions about the aerobics report, or comments from the board on that?
The only thing I've got to sit there and make on this here is, um, I'm not for sure what all we pay as far as with our lifeguard, with our instructors and stuff like that, but I know as far as, if you're paying somebody $10, $12.50, you know, I mean, sorry, I'm mumbling. Then I don't think these numbers here as far as for patrons to cover somebody $10, I think it should be more than that, it does, you got LNI that's included in that?
No, no, we specifically said, if, because there's always other programs in the pools, so we made, we said, assume other programs are paying for the lifeguard and all the other, and all the other stuff is actually not being paid for, it's being paid for by the, um, operations and stuff, half of that is paid for by the, um, the district fund. So, we were just, we just made, let's, let's just assume other programs that are in the pool at the same time are paying for all the lifeguard and all that other stuff, just to make it easiest to look at it. So yes, it would actually take more people in the pool, but, if aerobics wasn't in there, you still have the other programs going on, lifeguard would still have to be there, that's why we started with that assumption, it just, it's like, let's just make that, you know, that's why.
I might, yeah.
So...
Well, the reason I brought that up, Sean, just so you know, randomly, you know, it's because it's in here, but she compares in the aerobics portion...
Thank you with the following, so, could you, go ahead with the following.
I mean, it was just, that's why I brought up, where did they get their, their, their prices, and it's because she was using it as a comparison with all three, and I, and I just kind of wanted to know where, where they came up with that.
Thank you.
Mainly because I thought, if I don't put it in somebody the last week, well, if we went with the staff calculations, what would it be?
So the proposed fee increase is the one that the committee came up with, correcting for their minutes, and the proposed staff fee increase is per the...
Our recommendations, on our...
Recommendations from the staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's right, because you were at the meeting.
No. Now I understand, thank you, Steve.
My pro, I think that completes the program review.
Alright, further questions on the draft proposal changes for the John Vanners Lake pool fee while we are here?
I would like to bring up one thing, because the last meeting was something, it was a little bit of confusion, and it had to do with the, the price that MWR is reimbursing our pool for, and it is $2.63. And I think that, uh, the way it came out was, I think I had asked the question, were they paying the same amount, and I was told that, yes, we were, yes, they were, but it isn't, it's, it's $2.63, and that was based on the 10 punch pass?
Yep, from several years ago.
From several years ago. With that said, if a 10 punch pass is $2.90 now, they should be paying $2.90.
The, the problem is, the, the, um, the contract specifically says $2.63, because no director since 2006 has bothered to upgrade it.
What I was going to bring up is, the contract is expired, and it's, that's what I was told, I was told it expired a year ago.
No, we had to sign it again in order for them to have the...
It's funny, I was told a year ago, okay.
It got signed a year ago, I guess, by Gino.
But, there's a segue to this, they have been told that the contract may need to be redone based on what we decide our 10 punch pass would be, they were willing to redo the contract when we are ready to have them do it, we've had that conversation multiple times.
So whenever we do go down this road, we need to look at redoing the contract.
Was there any reason we can't ask them to redo the contract now?
Except for the fact that if we have an increase and raise the punch pass to...
There you go. Go up again.
There you go.
So as soon as we, as soon as we make our 10 punch pass finalization, I will let them know and we'll redo that, they're, they know that it's coming.
Thank you very much.
Further questions or comments? Awesome. Kayaks?
Alright, here's what I've got, wow. You know, there's a lot of RCWs on Surplus property.
Yes, there are.
I'm very, I'm, actually, I'll be honest, it's kind of confusing, and I can understand why you went so over there, right? Uh, that would not be good, because that would cost a lot more money than the one kayak is worth, and, and that's where we are. But I think I understand enough to know that we can donate, if we were to choose to do this, this kayak to another state agency, I believe. Or we can keep it as an extra here, which might be the way to go, or we can follow that same process and sell that one kayak, the problem we have is, if we don't sell it, and I think if I, if I understood you correctly, that we would be looking at least $250 to advertise this.
That's correct.
And the kayak is a $500 kayak, that is not sold either of the two times now, so...
Is there, I think there is more than one kayak.
There's one sea kayak and one river kayak.
Okay, thank you.
Is the river kayak the one that's like a hundred bucks or something?
Yeah, and the sea kayak was a $500 minimum bid, I believe.
Yes.
So I guess my question would be, have you talked to Pete? Can he still use those two kayaks?
The river kayak, probably not, he went like this, the sea kayak, I didn't, he said maybe. But I think that he probably could, especially knowing that he's got the Skagit Valley College class coming up, they could go back into inventory.
Well, I was tasked with trying to find out different ways to handle it, and one of them would be, you know, uh, I dread the thought of throwing something away, it's, it just sounds so bad, but it seems to me, and I, and what I would like to do is to talk to MRC to find out if I understand it correctly, that you could actually donate that to a, another tax-supported facility. And if that is the case, are there any other pools in our, in our, in the Puget Sound area that, that have, have a similar thing that we do with kayak lessons, could they use that? Because at least then it wouldn't be throwing something away. I, I honestly think for us to go down that road of advertising again, seeing as how they haven't sold twice, it sounded like the one, the guy, the one family might buy that one, but what if he doesn't? And then we've, we've thrown money away, and the best thing I think would be if Pete could still use that.
And I'll, I'll have that conversation with him again.
So, I, I don't know where you want to go, Sean.
Where do we want to go? So the research is, there's three suggestions from you for the, for the board are that we ask...
If I would rank them, I would suggest that if Pete Stevens says, yes, we can use them, we keep them, if, if he says we can't use them, I would, I would like to look at if there's someone in the area that we could donate them to.
That, that guy, um, offered that night to buy it, can, would it be not, if, if we called him and said, are you still interested, are you going to, would you bid on it? Because we're not going to, we're not, we're not going to advertise it, we're just going to get rid of them, but if you would say you're going to bid on, then we advertise it, we'd at least make the $250.
That would be great, but it's illegal, I don't know.
As long as you have open bidding, and so someone else could come in and overbid him, I don't, you know, we're not colluding, we're just saying, if we put it back for bid, would you still be interested? Because otherwise, we don't know of any interest, so we're not, we're not going to waste the $250. But it would be wrong for us to call and say, hey, we're not going to open bidding, but you can have it for...
I see what you're going to say. So your suggestion along with Steve's, Commissioner Offmeyer's are, um, Steve, let me get this...
I like that idea, if it worked, yeah.
So, ask Pete if he needs them, find out if there's someplace else that could use them, another tax district that can use them. And as a third, third option would be to ask the person if they're still interested prior to us opening up for the bid process as we did before.
I would say if the person was open to it, I mean, I would jump that to number one.
You would?
That would be my number one choice, because we could make back, you know, some more revenue, because we haven't made back what we were supposed to.
So your suggestions to the board are to research these three options before next month, or do we want to make a motion?
I move that, um, the director called the guy, do you have his information?
Of course I do.
From the, that had...
To find out if there's still interest?
To find out if he's still interested, and would, would he bid on it if it, if it is available, to make a decision before going forward to put it, put them up for bid, and we might as well go ahead and put the other one up for bid, I don't think it costs that much more to put the, the other one.
Okay, stop, stop. Thank you, we have a motion to find out if there's still interest in the bid for the one kayak, and then move forward to put them both out for bid, as we did before. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, now we can talk about it.
Discussion. If he changes his mind, then it's $250, that, that's the, that's the downside, because the person goes, oh yeah, I plan on bidding, and then it's like, life happens, he's like, yeah, I changed my mind, and I'm like, oh shoot, that's $250.
That is very true.
You know?
That is very true.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Erica did have a suggestion last time, she said, you know, maybe we should wait till the spring, because it's now getting into the, you know, less kayak-friendly weather.
Go ahead, we're in discussion.
Well, I think that's what I would like to make a motion about.
But we can't, we've got one motion on the floor, we, we, okay, alright, so...
I like that idea.
Further discussion on the motion on the floor? No further discussion, all in favor of finding out there's still interest in them moving forward with the bid? No further discussion, all in favor of finding out there's still interest in them moving forward with the bid? Okay, didn't pass unanimously, roll call vote, all in favor, Donna Sue? You vote aye? Cecil?
No.
All right, Steve is nay. So that motion fails. Any further motions?
I make a motion that we wait until the springtime.
On the last two kayaks?
The last two kayaks.
Second.
So we have a motion for, to wait until springtime on the last two, it's been seconded, further discussion. All in favor of waiting until the spring for the last two kayaks?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Steve, for your work. Budget for 2016. Did we, um, we talked about moving forward with that? Yet, uh, there was nothing in the minutes. I don't think we've actually started the process, however, it is August the 20th. Um, the budget for all new, all board members needs to be to the county prior to December, mid-December. I'd be lying if I told you a date.
And we also talked about this at the meeting, you did not attend, and said, we want to approve it before the new board... We want the old board to approve it, so before the new board is certified.
Well, that would be January of next year.
No, they said there was gonna be certified, remember, because some of us won't be able to sit the board after...
Oh, after the elections.
After the election is certified, sorry, the election is certified, they said that would be the fourth week of November.
All right, so looking at everything that is going on in the next month and a half, we also need to do a special meeting for the budget.
When do you want to do that?
Can you say that, Sean?
I'm so sorry. For, we, we then need to do a special meeting to, special budget meeting as we did for the budget for... Um, so we're gonna need to do that again sometime before November. So, when do we want to do that?
Okay, September is gonna be very busy.
It's, it actually is gonna be so much simpler, I think. One, because the staff, and we just went through this and so we're all familiar with stuff and we don't have to get educated about certain things, I would hope. So...
How long will the staff, if, if the board doesn't mind, how long will the staff need to get ready for something like that? Here's a valid question. Big size. Don't throw anything at me, Joanna.
We need the summer to get over for sure.
And the longer we get into 2015, the more solid the data for actuals for 2015 will be to help us make the 2016 budget.
We scheduled that for the end of October, would that give you ample time?
It would give us ample time, and I think with your new director choice, it would give them a chance to be part of that as well.
Suggestions from the board?
I'm not the one who's scheduled usually hampers things.
Well, are we looking at October, that's true? Are we looking at October or November?
I'd say late October.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Um, Erica brought up something as far as that goes. Uh, our last date, when we sit there and do everything final to Canada and stuff like that, is the 13th of October.
Yes, sir.
So, when could we honestly expect for a start date for the job? Second of November, 2019? I mean, honestly? You know, once we sit there and said, yes, you're hired, they accept, couple days, or a day to accept, whatever, you know, then they accept, then how much longer do we sit there, would, would it be before we put them in place to start?
I'd say November 2nd would be reasonable at the latest.
Because normally if they already have a job, it's two weeks.
Two weeks notice.
That you want to give notice.
Yes.
And obviously, we do not want them to sit there and give a two-week notice, or not to give a two-week notice to their current employer.
No.
If we're asking for a minimum of that.
Yeah.
So... So, you know, we're looking at pretty close to it at two weeks. I mean, and I know the second, that's pretty much right at two weeks.
Well, I mean, isn't it, it's gonna be Erica's budget anyway, just because they're not gonna be able to get on board and, and be fully versed in all the budget nuances at all.
It would be difficult.
This is gonna be, this, let's just assume, this is gonna be Erica's budget. Good job, Erica! But, you would so throw.
So, looking at the timeline.
And all them dates and stuff, I mean, also, the 19th on, and up until, hold on. 13th or finish, so, after the 16th, 19th on, we can sit there and schedule, of October.
Okay.
We can sit there and schedule that.
Yeah.
Because late August, early September, I mean, September, October, first, first and la- last part are the last part of September, first part of October, we're gonna be busy with hiring the person, getting that started.
Yep.
Now, we'd prefer to let that get finished before we sit there and start the next one, since we do have the time.
All right. So, looking at the last part of October, all in agreeance? Uh, we did it on a Saturday before, does that work well with everybody? Or do you want to change the day?
It's gonna depend on the Saturday, we do have a swim meet that is scheduled to be here the 27th of October.
Remember, we had that first budget meeting was on a, like, Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
I remember the 31st, if we do it then, it's Halloween, so that's not, it's probably not a good day.
All right. So are we looking at the night, you want to do it on a weekday, what weekdays work for everybody?
The only day that I'm not available the first week, or, last week in, in October is the 27th.
About this. We ask everybody to look at dates for next month's meeting, because we don't have to set a date.
Exactly.
And we come up with a date with recommendations from the staff for the last two weeks of October for a budget meeting. Uh, is that it?
It's good.
Okay with everybody?
And then Wendy's is gonna be here also, so that's better.
All right.
But it'll be sometime during that week.
It'll be sometime in the last two weeks of October. Dog Park, FRC Northwest, it's, pardon me, any further comments or questions about that? Dog Park, FRC Northwest work?
Um, they have gone out there several times, they have done mowing, they have taken some branches down, they've done a lot of trash pickup. They were just out there a couple of days ago and worked pretty hard. I have asked Matt to be liaison with them, he and the FRC Northwest, it's a first-class association. They are meeting out there, I think they're trying to schedule it for early this next week. Um, and they're going to look at any additional things that they're going to want to do. We're talking about doing some, um, painting of some of the signs that are looking pretty shabby. There's going to be some posts that need to be replaced, they're beginning to rot. Um, some cleanup of the grounds, and Matt is going to work together with the, uh, two guys that are coordinating it from FRC to get that done and to help them with the supplies that we need to get that to look nice again. So we're really trying to work hard to clean that up. I know Matt's going out there a couple, two or three times a week, and he's picked up couches and TVs and everything else that's being dumped over there. Um, and he's been, uh, kindly helping, it's been spilling over into what is actually the Navy property. And Matt is going over there and he's actually pulling the stuff up off of the Navy property and putting it into the truck and taking it with our load to the dump as well.
So every time he goes there, there's more stuff?
Every single time he goes there, there's furniture.
Have we ever complained to the, I mean, don't, can you complain to the Sheriff's Department?
We have asked that the Sheriff's Department, um, increase their presence at the Dog Park and they, we believe they have been doing so, but these people are coming at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning waiting for the sheriffs to drive by. Matt's actually gone out there in his truck and sat and waited and caught, caught one of them. And they had a little, a little, uh...
Not a good idea.
Chit-chat.
No, it was the cat poop lady.
Yeah, but not a good idea.
That's not...
That's really not a good idea for our employees to be doing.
So, he, uh, and again, it's just, it's into, very frustrating for us. We're gonna look at...
We talked about before in the past, I'm sorry to interrupt, we talked about, uh, just a chain though, didn't we, in the past?
Gate or a chain across there that would, somebody would have to go and open it, you know, dawn until dusk sort of the thing with the Dog Park, but it's, it's getting frustrating.
You made a comment, I have to ask. It costs every time we dump this, dump this stuff, right?
Yeah, every time we go to the dump.
So I hope he's not grabbing too much off the Navy's property, I'm just saying.
Mostly it's papers.
Huh?
Mostly papers.
You know what I'm saying, if somebody's dumping couches over there.
That's on ours.
We'll let our uncle pay for it.
Yeah, but the, the furniture has all been on ours because they're not even going all the way to the Dog Park, they're just dumping in the road.
That's so sad.
But the thing is, we do need to sit there and consider some kind of gate chain or something in there. And also, do we have, uh, because I don't remember seeing any signs posted out there that said when the operating hours are.
No, and that's something that we do, that would be really good, good for us to set. That way we could make sure that there is an employee going out there and we have a chain or a gate or something. We have employees scheduled to close it and to open it.
How much do we have budgeted for that? Okay.
Not much.
Not much.
And that's, that's the problem, here's the budget. Hold on, I got that.
They do the Dog Park every night too, it's just people wait until they see them leave and then they, they, they wait.
They have three deputies on the island at night, they can't be everywhere.
No.
And they have one state, our two state patrols, one north and south.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets, uh, it gets pretty thick.
Anything that we can do in order to sit there and help with that as far as a gate or something like that?
They've been really...
Would be beneficial.
They've been really cooperative with us of trying to increase...
We need to tell the Navy how much we appreciate.
We'd like to get a little, a little sign, um, to put up there and let the, let our public know that FRC Northwest First Class is taking care of it.
I don't remember ever seeing something like that.
The only thing they've got in the budget is Clover Valley water. We didn't specifically set aside anything for the bu- for maintenance of Clover Valley. Because remember in the past, the Little League, that's why I asked that question. The Little League is taking care of the park, I mean, he maintained the fences and everything else and wa- uh, not wave. What is the way, Fetch, thank you very much. Fetch took care of maintenance on the Dog Park. So we didn't ma- we didn't budget anything for that. So even, and that was my question, um, when Steve, you mentioned the gate, or somebody mentioned the gate, and then you mentioned post and paint and everything else, none of that's in our budget right now.
I think Matt, Matt was saying he thinks he has quite a bit of the paint-type stuff already.
Okay.
We're gonna look at, I mean, I asked him to do it.
Can we ask him if he's got anything else that we can use as a cable across the road or anything else? Because right now, it's, it's not in the budget. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to either amend our current budget, or we'll have to look at something else. Because obviously, it's costing us money to throw away stuff.
And the thing is, is that's something also that we need to do with our current, I mean, our upcoming budget, is get something in there for an estimate of what we're going, what we expect to sit there and go and spend.
I'll ask Matt to go through and make a maintenance list for the Dog Park, much like he did for the pool.
And I would even do it, sit there and for the, um, for the ball fields.
Yeah.
Because the thing about it is, as long as they're sitting there, I mean, right now they're being taken care of, it's fine. But the moment that they're not taken care of, which we're having, we're happening right now.
Yes, sir.
And we're having, we're finding stuff out, or we're having a budget for it, we already have money to decide for that.
So can you ask Matt to look for maintenance lists for the Dog Park?
Clover Valley.
Yeah, Clover Valley is all.
Gotcha.
I've often wondered who, who donated that property to the Lawrenceburg Park District?
Navy.
Was it Navy?
Yes, sir. The Navy did, and it is a, and the reason I asked the same question when I, part of the original board, and I was told by Harvey, that the Navy donated it. And the problem we have where they dump this stuff is as you go in that street and then you take the right to go to the Dog Park, we own kind of like this pyramid triangular oblong pie shape that goes along the fence line back towards, um, uh, the gate. And, um, the problem there is, that's where they go to dump that stuff. And Matt was telling us, they go down that tree-lined road back there away from the Dog Park and they dump all kinds of stuff. So...
They're dumping it at the entrance now too.
Oh, well, that's...
And then down by the baseball fields.
Oh, really? Great. So, that's who donated, Steve, it was, uh, part of the Navy gave it to the district, I don't know why. I think they didn't want to maintain the two do- ball fields up there, is what Harvey said.
I've often wondered.
Yes, sir.
We need to look at something on that later on, on, um, recognizing that, who donated it and stuff like that. And especially like with what you're talking about as far as the First Class Association out there, you know, being the ones that's taking care of that. You know, some signs, some plaques, something out there, there's something like that we need to do.
Sure.
How much are the signs, maybe find out how much a sign?
They're not bad.
Like they put on the highway?
Well, as a commissioner, I will donate $50 to it, and if other commissioners want to donate, they can.
A sign for...
My bag, my bag. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Darn you.
That's not nice, I have shot.
Thanks. I'd be more than happy to donate two towards that sign.
I'm sorry, dude, I'm sorry.
Me, me. You know the crusher they're doing?
All right, anything further on FRC Northwest work at the Dog Park besides thanking them very much for their artwork? All right, pool usage in August during normal NWHAC practice times?
They've tripled in. We have had a few lap swimmers, they have not been near the amount that we were thinking we might get. We have had a decent wading pool, hot tub, and sauna usage. So, uh, we have had multiple families come in, and I, I saw three or four families in there during that time today. So the fact that we had decided to keep the, with our fall schedule, to keep those, the wading pool, the sauna, and the hot tub open during NWHAC hours, I think will go down very nicely. That is, that has seen a big increase. We've had only, if I take out some of the, some of the kids that were doing laps from the team, um, we probably get three or four, five lap swimmers at most.
Um, how was that advertised, that those hours were now available for the general public?
We had it in the building. Uh, we did word of mouth with our swim lesson classes, because we were also offering private lessons during that time. We also talked to many of our patrons who, who usually come at the noon till 1:30 timeframe and let them know that they would have the option to, to stay longer if they wanted to or to come later and stay through. Uh, we also had it on our, on our, um...
It's not saying later, is it? I thought it was that, um, lap swim breaks at 1:15 and they have open swim.
Yeah, so after...
And then the lap swim, so, yeah, so that's a difference then.
They'd come back in, um, and then they would have, um, we also had put it on our, on our Facebook page. That one gets shared a lot. You see a lot of people commenting on it and making, um, making notes on it. And that, that was where we, we did not put it in the paper for...
Well, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want you to put it in the paper, but it's not on the website, that's all.
No, it's not on the website, it's on Facebook page.
That's the only place I go to look at.
It's not on the website because I went to do it and it was one of those days where I could not get the website to save any of the changes I was making. And I have not had a chance to get back to it.
It's on our Facebook page, that was where we did put it, and that's where it does get checked. More people check Facebook than website.
Sean's looking at me with this.
No, no, I'm, do we need to take five? Okay. No, good. Okay, telecom issue update. Thank you.
Oh, I might have good news on this.
Yeah, I've, I've, yeah, Rick told me too.
Rick was in yesterday.
Who's Rick?
He's our IT guy. He has been doing behind-the-scenes conversation with Frontier, trying to track down a source further. Um, just in conversation with him yesterday when we were discussing it, he, it popped into his mind that, um... Our backup was set to start every night at 8:00 PM. As he got on there, he was looking at that, and he was looking at the amount of data that was transferring as part of that. And he said, you know, maybe the amount of data we have outgoing is slowing it down to the point where it's just crashing your internet out there. He got on the phone with them and adjusted the time, um, so our backup's starting later now, affected last night.
Eleven.
Last night, yeah, it's starting at 11 now. And last night, our internet was still up at 9:30 when they closed out for the night. Um, when we took the break, it was still up out there, so it may really have been as simple as that.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
All right, so more to follow on the telecom issue next month, since they pushed the date back. Questions or comments from the board on the telecom issue? Facility health standards, chlorine levels?
They're holding steady at three to five.
Made the fix, they're holding steady at three to five. Questions or comments from the board?
Give it that 5:15 minute in the morning when we check it? That's good? Cool.
Yeah, they're coming, they're coming in at night and...
Cool.
Doing their thing.
Cool.
There was, we had a couple of days where our wading pool was lower than what was asked, and those were at the morning readings. We closed those down, we, we did not allow the wading pool to, to be open, which we don't get usage at 6:00 AM.
We, we did not allow the waiting pool to, to be open, which we don't get usage at 6:00 AM. Um, notified maintenance, they immediately came in and addressed the issue. Matt, in fact, I think Matt was already here um, in the back at the time. So, we had them back open by seven.
Do we change the, um, the sheet that pe, that lifeguards are recording on? Do we change those to make the right numbers that Matt's supposed to be called at?
Yes.
Okay.
Question for you. The, the baby, the baby diapers for Sony. Do we sell those?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I was wondering about that the other day and I was hoping we did.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank goodness.
Further questions or comments about the facility health standards? Open records request, Ms. Julie?
Oh, knock on wood. I'm scared to say this, but we do not have any open requests right now.
So all open records requests are closed. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
The one that we were generous, was it satisfactory?
I already, thank you, response.
Okay, okay. That's what we want.
Okay, thank you.
Fall schedule? You said there was a...
There was just a couple of, we'd forgotten to put...
There's one little thing. It's a shuffling around of looking for the earlier open swim time during the week. I had forgotten to adjust the times back on Mondays. They should be the same as on Friday. So the N WAC and lap swim would go 5:30 until 6:30. Volleyball and Oak Harbor High School, 6:30 to 7:30, followed by the open swim from 7:30 to 9:00 with the family discount. So they were all in the correct places, just the times were not put back to what they needed to be.
Cause we had moved the early swim from Monday night to Wednesday night because Wednesday night is better attended.
Yes.
So the board last month approved the correct times?
They approved this that said that N WAC would be 5:30 to 7:30, lap swim 5:30 to 7:00, volleyball 7:15 to 8:15, Oak Harbor High School 7 to 8:00. And those times, especially the volleyball and Oak Harbor High School, would then overlap into the open swim.
So it just needs to be adjusted to reflect Friday's evening schedule?
Yes, would repeat, would extend on Monday.
Except for the late night, nine to 10?
Yes. And Monday would have the family discount, but Friday does not.
So, is the pool empty from 6:30 to 7:00 at night?
No. We would have from, volleyball would start at 6:30 and Oak Harbor High School would start at 6:30.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
And that's on the, on the one that you guys had that night. I had just forgotten to adjust those times back.
We will also have the deep end open for people to water run if they want to.
Do they, do, do they still have time for Oak Harbor dive?
Yes, they do.
Where's that at?
Um, they're going to dive during our open swims.
Okay.
And they may use one of their scheduled practices. Aaron and I were talking and they may use one of their scheduled practices where they don't have, uh, swimmers normally showing up and they'll use their lane-based user dive team.
Does any of you, um, is a good diver and that just kind of...
Yep.
What's Oak Harbor dive?
Part of the Oak Harbor High School.
It's part of the...
It's a dive team?
Part of the high school.
Springboard diving, yeah.
I was thinking scuba. I was like...
Yeah, it's part of the swim team.
Yeah, it's a springboard diving.
It's just they, they can't really dive during the same time that they're...
Swimming.
Now, are they part of the contract of the high school?
Yes, they are.
I don't, I don't remember ever seeing that mentioned. Okay.
Not to bore you, but the, the, the high school swim and dive, it's kinda interesting if, if the, if the, say girls, for example, if they don't have a diver, it's very hard for them to win the swim.
Thirteen points right there.
So it's, you know, so it's good for Oak Harbor to have, to have a diver.
You start out thirteen points right there, just to have one. Okay.
Did not know that.
Did not know that.
And I'm like, like competitive swimming high school. It is a team sport. It's really neat. You know, cause all this stuff that swimmers do is all individual, individual, individual. Then you get to high school and it's like until the, until the districts and the states, it's all team, team one, you know, it's pretty neat, so. Anyway. There you go.
So to make these adjustments to the schedule, since we approved the schedule, we will need a motion to, uh, on the amendments.
Correct it.
I would, uh, make a motion, please, that we approve the 2015, 2016 fall schedule as amended.
Do I have a second? Further discussion on the changes or amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for catching on, Julie. Alright. Private lesson program?
We begin to accept private lessons again August 1st. We have had several more come in. We have had, uh, with the, um, swim lessons, they finished their last day of the summer session today. And many of our instructors are filling this week and the remainder of next week with the private lessons, getting a lot of those taken up. Um, we have had many that are ongoing. We have several new families that have asked for them to be taught in a fairly short time. They'd like to get them done before school starts, so our instructors are working to get that done for them.
Questions or comments from the board?
Have we ran into any of the more, any more of the situations that we ran into a few months ago?
No, we have not. In fact, um, I, Rhiannon and I have both been reviewing the pile that, that comes in and we're noticing dates and there are some that, uh, have come in earlier than others that we haven't been able to schedule first, just simply because of the times that the family has down and the availability of our instructors during that time. Uh, Rhiannon's made contact with some of the families involved in that and asked if they were able to, to adjust their times at all. In one case, it was a yes and we were able to get that family scheduled. In another case, it was a no and they were willing to wait until they were able to be picked up, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Further comments or questions from the board?
We have a break.
Of course we can. So we're finished with the private lesson program. We will come back, we'll take a five-minute break at 9:45. We'll come back at 9:50 and start on employee performance appraisals. It is 9:50. Wow, we did good. 9:50, we'll call the meeting back in order. We finished private lesson program. And we're moving on to employee performance appraisals.
Um, the senior staff employee performance appraisals, uh, two of the staff have already received, had and signed their performance appraisal. Uh, the third one is complete and I am just going to be setting an appointment. The fourth one is nearly complete and the fifth one, because I am going to put Rhiannon on the same one as the senior staff is receiving just because she has been doing a lot of the aquatic director's stuff. Um, I will be starting hers as soon as I finish the other two, so. Three are completed, two are given. Three to go.
Three to go.
Um, the lifeguards and swim lesson instructors and aerobics instructors, Rhiannon and I have started on those. We have not given any yet. But we are hoping to begin to sit down with the employees next week.
Were you gonna send us that form, the, the Bill Walker format?
Yeah.
I think...
I can.
Okay.
I'll get it to you.
We actually should do one for you.
That's what I was saying.
I haven't had one since December of 2013, so that would be...
We will do one for you.
Right now.
The only thing the board can actually comment on would be Erica's performance as interim director. So I will caution us, as, as some of us know, that the only thing we can do is judge her performance on as interim director.
No, good point.
Right.
But, yes, exactly.
Cause we do not, we do not supervise the aquatics program director. That was my point, cause we don't supervise the aquatics program director.
Did you give yourself an performance appraisal? Is how you did as aquatics director?
No, but I'm considering asking the senior staff to weigh in on it.
That's a good idea.
I, I'm...
That's a very good idea.
I'm probably going to be harder on myself than they will be on me, but I thought it might be an idea for them, just so that there's something.
Cause it's always a good feedback.
Suggestions, if nothing else, exactly.
But, but that is something we need to, do we wanna wait until we have, uh, the new permanent director in place and then do one? Should we, do you get, starting to do one now?
We need to start it now.
I agree. I'm, I'm trying to get us all kind of on the same schedule.
How about, could you send us all the forms with, uh, my recommendation to the board is that you send us the forms. We look at the forms and come back and do your, uh, performance appraisal at next month's meeting as the interim director, as that has to be done in an open public meeting.
Yes.
It doesn't have to, it's...
We can discuss it in the back. Right? But unfortunately, the performance appraisal has to be done in an open public meeting.
It's true, it does.
She is, she works, she's a public employee and works for the board.
Okay.
So it does have to be done in an open public meeting.
It's true.
It can all be discussed in a...
Right. She can be discussed out there, but we come out here and vote on the final...
And it is public, okay.
I would recommend that.
Yeah.
That's her, yeah, as per the RCWs, thank you, Steve. As per the RTWs, it's her decision where we discuss those things, however, the voting has to be done out here.
Yeah.
Okay, so will you send us the format?
Yes, I will. I've made a note.
Further discussion on employee performance appraisals? Meeting materials, meeting materials timelines?
How did it work for you guys this time?
And I apologize for the minutes dribbling in. Not for the length. That's your fault for making the meeting so long. But, um, the, I apologize for them just dribbling in and hopefully that won't happen again. But I, I liked it. I think it works well. Did it make a difference to you guys with the stuff being available to you a week ago or did you read it today?
Actually, I read it a week ago.
Good for you.
I started, you might have finished up your stuff.
Okay. So good job on putting together that timeline. And do you guys need us to do something different else other than not getting the minutes instantly?
No, I think it worked really smoothly. One thing I will say is challenging is our meetings moving forward are going to be fairly early in the month for the, you know, it's the third Thursday of the month, but we have one that is actually the 15th of the month. And, you know, sometimes getting that end of the month data all pulled together and trying to get it out that week early. Now we're a week into the month. So I know that we actually updated the panel tonight compared to what was sent to you guys a week ago. Um, so you guys may see some things like that happen from time to time, just logistically speaking.
If, if that happens, you need to tell us, oh, by the way, we're chang, we changed the data and, cause I looked at the stuff you sent me when you sent it and I looked at it then and said, oh, I don't have any questions. So...
Absolutely.
Seems like there was something... Oh, I know. The, um... Uh, it'll, it's for the, more for the, are we in staff reports now?
No.
When we get staff reports, I have something for that. Sorry.
Further questions or comments on material, meeting materials timeline? We are finished with unfinished business. Moving to the staff reports.
Where are the staff reports?
In the back. Let me really quick, before I forget it, read it into the minutes. The employee of the month, it is Michelle Robinson. Michelle is an exemplary employee and a highly valued member of our staff. Her ability to recognize the need for someone to step up step in has been appreciated as she has been able to, often with little notice, to step in and help our aquatics programs. Michelle has taken on extra swim lessons students, multiple private lesson students and lifeguard supervisory shifts. Additionally, Michelle has helped organize the often chaotic first day of swim lessons, has helped train new instructors and has been a great source of information for our new staff. Michelle sets high standards for herself and consistently surpasses them. She is a great example for all of our staff to follow. Her cheerful attitude combined with outstanding work ethic is very much appreciated by all who work with her, especially her new supervisor, pardon me, especially her supervisors. Thank you, Michelle. We couldn't do it without you.
Good job.
Thank you, Michelle.
She's a great kid.
Um, staff reports. Anything of note?
Just the update to the, to the showers. Uh, the parts have been installed and the showers are warm again.
Thank you. How long did that take?
Um, about, was it three and a half, four weeks?
It wasn't long.
No, it wasn't that long.
Wasn't quite that?
No.
Oh, yeah, that quarter is, when they had theirs, it was down like almost six. It's ridiculous. Yeah, at least two to three weeks, I would say.
Two and a half.
Yeah. But, yep, they're working beautifully.
Questions or comments on the staff reports from the board?
Um, I have a couple. Is, did you just not change the date or? This is what you sent us two weeks ago or a week ago? So that, it was what, the date just was, okay, I just wanted to be sure. So one of the things that I, I thought was, maybe what we should do is make sure that the staff reports actually are dated from the week before the last meeting to, you know, a week ago.
Yes, see, on mine, I just put that it's for July 2015, cause we're always a month behind.
Yes. But that's what, I don't wanna be two weeks behind because we come to this meeting and two weeks of this month happened. And so maybe if we think of it as being mid-July to mid-August for these reports, recognizing all the financial data is gonna be from, and that's fine. But the reports should be, you know, the four weeks and as current as possible, which is, again, because we ask for them a week in advance and we're very sluggish. Things take us a long time to take, to deal with. So we don't need minutia, but it's still like, you know, showers went out and now they're up. Uh, you know, that would have been better. That's what, anyway. And, um...
We could, we could do that.
And, and maybe this is, is, again, because we're not supposed to, the pool shutdown is not in here anywhere and it's going to be shut down coming up. And I wonder if maybe we wanna have a coming up kind of section. Meaning pools can be shut down for maintenance. I, I, I think as a commissioner, that's something I'm interested in, not as a, cause I never swim on weekends, so I'm not interested as usual with the pool, but I am interested as commissioner that we're not closing down for three days to do maintenance. Cool. But, eh, you know, am I wrong? Is it, does that seem like a good...
That's not reasonable.
No, I think an upcoming on the horizon kind of section might be better than, you know, mid-August to mid-September. Uh, because, you know, we're starting on these, you know, September 1st. I'm gonna be starting on my August stuff.
Okay.
So then to go back and add in what's happening in that week or so in between.
Again, we're not supposed to be involved in minutia, so, you know, it, but if it's a big thing. And then, but a upcoming section.
Definitely an upcoming section to give you guys kind of a heads up on what's coming.
Okay.
The one thing I, I did wanna bring up in the director's report was we did receive an award from the Oak Harbor High School Transition Team.
That was on there.
Program, um, for our contribution to student growth. And, um, we're really happy that we have the opportunity to participate in it and help our, some of our special needs in our community to have unemployment opportunity. So we have a, got a really nice little award from them.
When are we supposed to our awards now?
Well, that one I have back in the office, but we're going to, I wanted to bring it up tonight and then we're gonna post it out there when we change the employee of the month certificate. We'll post it out there in our little glass case.
Thank you.
Yep.
And you might mention to, um, the coach, it's like snark in the, snark in his section is noted. And way to get warm funding, bud.
With that said, I would ask that the board not be snarky towards him either because I've seen an email kind of prompted some of it. It's a back and forth type of thing going on right now. And somehow we, we need to rise above that as, uh, as a board.
I will speak to coach as well.
Can I ask a question, Sean?
Sure.
You tell me if it's out of line at this point. You know, the, uh, reports that are all put together and, you know, having the, the interim director here to give the director's report to answer any of our questions. Going forward from this point, I'm wondering if it's really necessary that we, we have two other employees here. Cause I don't know if you're here on your own or if you're, if you're being paid to be here.
They have to be paid to be here.
They have to be paid to be here, yes.
Exactly. So I, I really don't know why going forward, you know, Erica is very competent and this is her. She is the interim director. So going forward, I, I would, uh, kind of recommend...
Good point. We, we haven't done it in the past.
Yeah.
There are some times when I...
I understand it to this point.
Where I do need to defer to them because they have more knowledge of some of the financials. I think maybe we could have them take turns.
Okay, that might be a good thing.
Have one of them here and not the other and that way they can...
If you would feel more comfortable right now, I mean, I, I could see for, for a while. Yeah. But it's just, you know, we'll get to look at that, to, to bring two people and make them sit here through this for, you know, three or four hours and, you know, at the same, you know, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I was gonna say we have two months left until we have a new director, so for the next two months...
I could maybe get one and then the next month have the other one come in.
There's, there's a lot of time I won't be able to.
Okay. It sounds like you're the girl, you're the lady.
Yeah, and I mean, there, there are some things, a lot of what they're, what they're saying, I am aware of. There, every once in a while, there are something that I don't know the details and I'd like you guys to have.
You're doing such a good job with this.
So I refer to them.
Yeah, and just for the record, if I come like, um, we were here for the special meeting on Monday. Um, you know, we sat in the back, we were not clocked in. We were here for our own interest and our own knowledge. Um, you know, if I'm sitting in and I'm answering questions and you're tasking the things during the meeting to work on, then that's when I clock in. If I'm just here observing.
We don't take this wrong.
No, not at all. Not at all, just clarification. I'm, I'm very careful about that.
Thank you. I didn't mean to disrespect you.
No, no.
Thank you.
I did not take it that way.
That's a very good point.
Further comments or questions about the staff reports? We had no new business besides the unfinished business, so we're done with that. Pardon me. Discussion, final comments or questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Hoffman?
I have one.
Commissioner Pierce?
I do have one.
Sir?
First of all...
First of all, um, I did do the open records training, so all the two trainings that are required are...
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next thing I've got is some questions as far as, I know the kayaks and stuff are put off until next year in order to sit there and get rid of, but also walk around the grounds and stuff. I mean, we've got a vehicle out there with a flat tire, you know, four vehicles. Why do we have so many vehicles? And if we have vehicles that are broken, why do we have them? Why aren't we getting rid of them? Chairs laying around, I mean, that, that needs to be cleaned up. And I'm talking about here, not at the park. And another thing as far as... Public comments. My honest opinion, it is not a communication between us and them. They make the comments, we listen, and that's where it should stop at. We should not be going in, answering, turning, and, and do a public comment session for 45 minutes. You know, it should be three minutes, and adhere to three minutes.
Noted.
But we need to sit there and really tighten down on that. And even during the meetings, if people want to sit there and make comments, to have, have discussions in the background, they need to leave. And...
That was my fault tonight, for letting them get out of hand, you're exactly right, Steve.
I'm going to start, let's say, a little bit more about that. You know, if I have to call a point of order, I'll call a point of order.
Please.
And, uh, if it upsets people, got my number, I'm a public official, that's fine. I don't care. Well, I do care, but, you know. We need to sit there and keep our meetings to the point to keep them running, because here it is coming up on 10 o'clock, after 10 o'clock,